I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We a roll call please.
Mayor.
Here, here.
Mayor.
Here.
Councilmember Cavallari.
Here.
Councilmember Steckler. Councilmember Allison.
Here.
Councilmember Duque.
Here.
Councilmember Paddock.
President.
Councilmember Steckler called me at five thirty to let me know he is stuck in Seattle traffic with an ETA of about six ten. So I do not think we'll need a motion to excuse. I do have a couple agenda adjustments. One, I don't, Grant and Martin, do we need the executive session at the end of the meeting?
Unless the rest of council prefers to again bring back a discussion on Flock and. But. Sorry. Apologize. Oops. But yeah, unless council wants to move forward with the discussion.
Okay, well, we'll hold that in advance till the end of the meeting. There's been a request to, in light of the election night, to not have the study session that's on the agenda. I'm open to the will, the majority, so we'll defer that discussion until John gets here. So we'll proceed and when we get there, we'll get there. So that brings us to audience communication. Would anyone in chambers like to address the council tonight? Mr. Harder. Off, off. I don't think it's on.
There we go. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff and neighbors. I just wanted to say how much I've appreciated the opportunity to run for Mill Creek City Council this year. It's been a rewarding experience to connect with so many residents, hear what matters most to them, and see firsthand how deeply people do care about the future of our city. And I think it is an important time for Mill Creek and the decisions that we make in the next five to 10 years. I think whether it's finances, growth, housing, infrastructure, public safety or social issues, it's going to shape the community we become. And I wanted to be a part of that conversation and I'm grateful that this campaign gave me the chance. As I get older, I find myself drawn to opportunities that have a lasting impact, ways to give back and help build something meaningful for the next generation. And for me, running for council was that type of opportunity. But I wanted to thank my fellow candidate candidates Connie Garov and Tanis for running a very respectful race. It's encouraging to see healthy competition focused on ideas and service and not division. And a special thanks to Tanis for collaborating with me and combining our efforts to engage our community since we share a vision for a thriving, connected Mill Creek. And it's been a privilege to work with her. So whatever the outcome tonight, I feel lucky to live in a place where residents can step up, get involved and help shape the city that will lead for our kids and future generations. Thanks.
Anyone else in chambers, like Tanis?
Tanis Gobieski, Mill Creek. Very briefly, I just wanted to, I saw on the agenda that our esteemed school resource officers will be speaking tonight. And I just wanted to go on record saying they're fantastic. I support them a hundred percent. And they have permission to embarrass my child anytime. They do really, really, really impactful, good work at our schools. And I appreciate the fact that we have that partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanis. Anyone else in chambers? Barb?
Barb Krill. My title. Mill Creek. I wish to speak in regard to the Penny Creek Nature Area, which you are discussing this evening. I feel, my own opinion, it would be a disservice to our community to reject our ownership of the area. To possibly lose public access to the area would be such a disappointment and a negative reaction toward our city. We want people to want to come to Mill Creek for our parks, trails, and supportive nature preservation for everyone to enjoy. I do hope you, as the council, will decide to take ownership of the Penny Creek Nature Area. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Anyone else in chambers? Mr. Wright. Name and city of residence, please.
Evening, councils, city managers. It's me again. My name is Chuck Wright. I live at one five nine oh seven twenty-fourth Court Southeast. As you all know, November eleventh is Veterans Day. And once again, I'm in front of you to address our city Veterans Monument. A question to my heart is, how much movement has there been towards upgrading this monument, which honors those who dared to serve our nation through the armed forces? Be it the Army, the Marines, the Navy, the Coast Guard, the Air Force, or the Space Force? Back in 2010, when the monument became a reality, our nation had only five military institutions. But since December twentieth, twenty nineteen, our armed forces grew by one, that being our Space Force. Our Mill Creek Monument still has the outdated five medallions. I'm here today to remind you of our new Space Force service and that this national force must be now recognized by having its own medallion added to the list of our fellow military institutions. Along with this, I am suggesting, at least on a monthly basis, our city keep us residents abreast of our city's goal to update this deserved Veterans Monument. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, and thank you for your service. And we, this was a big topic of conversation two weeks ago. And hopefully, Ms. Director Todd, the city manager offline, can give you an update. It is moving along. We're hoping to be under construction, I believe, next year. So, but they can provide you an update offline. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anyone else in chambers? I didn't see anyone else, anyone online. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone online, so we'll move into our presentations. The first being our proclamation for Veterans Day. This is a proclamation of the city of Mill Creek, whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining our freedoms and way of life. And whereas tens of millions of Americans have served in the armed forces of the United States during the past century, and whereas hundreds of thousands of Americans have given their lives while serving in the armed forces during the past century, and whereas Washington State is home to approximately four hundred ninety-four thousand veterans, fifty-six thousand active duty military, seventeen thousand National Guard and reserves and their families. And whereas our veterans are brave and selfless individuals who, when duty called, willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend the lives and liberty of others. And whereas our veterans understand the important task before them as Americans service men and women now keeping watch. And whereas all of Washingtonians must strive to ensure that ours remains a land, excuse me, a land worthy of the great love and sacrifice our veterans have shown for it. Now therefore, I, Brian Holtz, call the mayor of the city of Mill Creek, on behalf of the city council, to hereby proclaim November eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, as Veterans Day in the city of Mill Creek and encourage the community to acknowledge and honor the contributions of our veterans to the principles of democracy, individual freedom and human rights. Signed this fourth day of November, two thousand twenty-five. Okay, and that brings us to the presentation on Penny Creek. Director Todd.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, council. Just to clarify this presentation tonight, no decision. Decision probably be like Q two of next year, when you're faced with a decision, we'll cover that tonight. But mostly, I want to give you a little history, make sure we understand kind of where we are and where we, and how we got here. So overview, what we're going to talk about tonight. It is the off-site mitigation site that's required under critical area code as mitigation for development. Remember Justin talking about critical area last week? This is part of, it's related to that. One of the things that's required under development is that the developer makes sure that there's any impacts on wetlands. The development agreement for the farm property was done in 2019. That development agreement specifies extra things, different things that are put in the code or they make things that are more clear. So in this particular case, it had this section eleven point two, and I put it in the packet. If you will, look at the whole development agreement, section eleven point two. But basically, I thought that statement there was pretty indicative of what it was about. Foundation was for the developers' acquisition, restoration, enforcement, enhancement and donation of approximately sixty-one acres of undeveloped land located to the south of the project site to the city. So that was a big deal when they gave that to us. Didn't put it in here, but this goes back to Pacific Topsoils. About twenty years ago, pretty close, I think it was, maybe a little bit after that, we had an action between the city and Pacific Topsoils. They operated a peat mine on this site that was the mitigation site. And on the, on the east side of thirty-fifth, on the west side, they were operating a recycling operation that was supposed to be clean green, but also included concrete, et cetera. That turned into what's North Point today. If you look at their old map, that was a very big extensive industrial operation. After they left that side of the road, they went across thirty-fifth and also did continue with the peat mining and some other operations. Over a period of time, the city got to a resolution with that and a lot of things happened. But one of the things was that they were allowed to have that, the garden center you still see today. Later on, you'll see a piece of property that the city acquired in the process that a lot of us don't know about. But that created this opportunity for the developer of the farm to take and use that site and prove it. So it was an old peat mine with a lot of nasty stuff happening. So we'll talk about that a little bit. During, in the development agreement, back to that, the, the condition was that we had up to five years for them to donate to the city after all project approvals. All project approvals is a little fuzzy in this, we'll talk about that a little bit later. But basically, all project approvals probably says it's sometime in the summer of twenty twenty-six is the end of our five-year period. And I'm going to talk about the pros and cons. So now I can't get this to go forward. There it is. So I want to go back to some slides from two thousand twenty-one to kind of give you a flavor of what it was, what we talked, what council talked about it back at that, or what staff talked about to council back at that time, give you some pictures of what was going on. The whole project is what we were talking about back in two thousand twenty-one, but really the wetland preserve, spring of two thousand twenty-one is what was going on. That's when it was being done. This is that eleven point two, a summary, that they purchased approximately fifty-eight, said sixty-one before, it's that number. It's the former Pacific Topsoil site, that peat mining site restored to the site per our standards. They're offering to dedicate the site at no cost once the five-year monitoring period is over. Public access is provided during the five-year period where it's under, under the ownership of the developer. And if we decide to decline to take the dedication, the developer can disallow public access. It would be, become theirs again and they could close it up if they want to. So that's important to remember. Couple maps, vicinity map, this is where the site, the farm itself is, and this is the mitigation site. This is thirty-fifth, and this is SR ninety-six or hundred and thirty-second. The wetland preserve itself here, again, here's the farm, the developed parts. This part over here is a county-owned site that's now owned by the city. That was the mitigation that was done for the improvements on hundred and thirty-second. So it's essentially a wetland with a wetland, some buffer enhancement things in there. This down here is the wetland preserve is this big piece we've talked about. Access to thirty-fifth is the gravel road we all recognize is down here. Pacific Topsoil is that nursery, they were allowed to keep that as a garden center. And this is where the Creekside West Townhomes were going in about that same period of time. Two different kinds of critical areas, and this is really what caused it to happen. This is the development, the farm, here's the apartments, here's the, this is the Amazon Go, here's the pet shop is down here for orientation. This buffer, this right here is all wetland, and this buffer got down to two feet in some places. And so that was why they had to have some mitigation, some serious mitigation, because the buffer, remember the things that Justin was talking about last week, nothing is less than like seventy-five feet. So they were allowed to go down to two feet. They had to do a bunch of work to improve this. But then it really was the off-site mitigation is the way they made a deal to say, let's take this old Pacific Topsoil site that had a lot of bad things happening on it. And would they had to improve that for, for either for city ownership or their own ownership, but it had to be, had to be improved. And it's mostly now been dedicated to be a critical area, buffer enhancement area. Another picture of that, this showed some of the things they're going to do. These are in your packet and they're available for the public online, so you don't need to go through it right now. But really talked about where they're going to put in some trails, put in some signage, some things they were going to do. A lot of it was removing invasive species along the edge. This main circle here, excuse me, the main, um, main oval or the main path that's, that's been created was the hardened roads. And so it was really packed down gravel roads that were put in a natural area. So part of the, the big part of this was take those roads out as roads and put them back in as trails. And so that was preserving the same part that was already degraded, but making it more appropriate in terms of wetland preservation. And here's what it looked like back in two thousand twenty-one. It was kind of a shock to me of like, gosh, there's a lot has happened since then. If you've been out there, you saw some of the pictures when the, the, uh, naturally, the PCNA group came a couple of weeks ago, a month ago. That was what it was, looked like at that time, very little in terms of natural species. It had mostly been denuded very, through over, over time. And so this kind of gives you a flavor for what it looked like. The gravel path that was now new with peat and compost on the sides enhancing it. There's along the side, that's where a whole bunch of little sprigs of things have been planted. Now that's just totally overgrown, that's one of the issues. It's kind of, they did a really good job of getting the, the native plants to, to grow there. Another view again along the east side looking north. Well, here's what it looks like today. But actually, last fall, and fall and spring of some of these pictures. But you can see now it's growing a lot. You can see the beavers have been busy on the left side in this particular shot. And there's again, the beavers were busy, I think this is one of the PCNA pictures. But you can see how much that's filled in from where it was just five years before. So they did a fantastic job of doing what we wanted them to do was restore this back more towards a natural area. Staff back in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one was talking about this and we suggested the name Penny Creek Wetland Sanctuary because it is not a natural area. It was a natural area, it had been destroyed in some fashion. The developer, I think, just kind of settled on the Penny Creek Natural Area. And I think that's not a bad name, but we really, as staff felt it was important, we talked about a sanctuary. It's not for active recreation, it's not for parks, it's not for motorbikes, it's not for all kinds of things like that. The nature area is, is the main driver on this. Another picture, beautiful picture of what it looks like now. The other part of the development agreement we've heard, you've heard us talk about is this mid-block crossing analysis. So all the conditions is if and when you decide you want to take it, then there's like a thirty-day period, it's remarkably short, probably not practical, for them to provide a traffic analysis that would hopefully support a mid-block crossing. And again, mid-block may not be exactly right. We'd do better to have an intersection. You've heard us talk about that since then, maybe there's places for two, maybe line up Silver Crest Drive, maybe line up one hundred and forty-fourth, something like that. But the idea is they would, they're responsible to provide that traffic analysis. Remember, since then, we've had the safe streets for all analysis, so we know quite a bit about that road already. We already have it in our capital plan to look at some sort of crossings up there. So whether you, whether you ask them to do this or not, is probably a variable in terms of when you accept it. Uh, access is a good thing, I'm going to show you on the next picture here, but think about how you get to it. So right now vehicular and pedestrian access is from thirty-fifth on that gravel driveway we've all seen that has the gate. There is pedestrian access on the east side from a hundred and thirty-eighth. Hundred and thirty-eighth goes by the Sun Rose neighborhood and it dead ends in where the Silver Lake Water District has a lift station. And the right-of-way goes right up to the park. And so there's an access there, not well-known. There is no public pedestrian access from the north. And so everybody who accesses it from the north is trespassing. They shouldn't be doing that. There is no, no way in right now. That's one of the things we've also put in our potential plan. If you were to accept this, we're looking at some way to get through some of that wetland area, and I'll show you that in a minute. There's a city parcel that's landlocked in the north with an unimproved right-of-way and easement that I'll show you as well. And then to the south is Thomas Lake, which is privately owned. We always talk about Thomas Lake there, but that's actually not part of this, it is the next parcel south. So here's an overview picture, it's too hard to see, but just for orientation purpose, I'm going to give you, this is the farm. This is that was the county mitigation site for thirty, fighting of thirty-fifth, it's now the city's. And so it's colored green because we own that. This is that path we saw before, here's the entrance off of thirty-fifth. If you're kind of coming in off of thirty-eighth, the Sun Rose neighborhood right here, that's where the, this, you can see the butt's right into it. Oops. Excuse me, I'm going to go back for a second. But this is where Thomas Lake is down here, this is colored blue, colored blue, just to show that this is all of that wetland area. And not, to be honest, I colored too much blue down here, that's private down there. The green is Creekside Place, Creekside Place is over here. This is their HOA owns that. And so that, that path that goes through here with the metal bridge, we've heard talked, people talk about that. That's a privately owned, uh, HOA-owned common area with a requirement that people are allowed to access that. The reason for showing this picture is if you were at the farm and you go down this, the path and go down their, their boardwalk, you get dropped off right here. Technically, you need to walk along there, down thirty-fifth and come into the park this way. There is no access through here that isn't across private land. So that's part of the issues. What I put in here is a dotted line, it was proposed and it was not accepted. I don't think there, anybody fought too hard, but it was proposed to have some sort of potentially an elevated boardwalk through here. And I think that's something that a city would enter into some agreement, hopefully with Creekside Place, to have an access to do that, to make it more accessible from the north. The next picture is to go a little bit tighter on that. This dotted line here is the stormwater pond. If anybody's been out there, that stormwater pond is in this common area. And so when people walk down this little tract there, that's actually a privately owned driveway for these three parcels. And if somebody was to go around this way, which is impossible, that's also trespassing on this common area. This is the parcel the city owns and it's landlocked in that you can't get to it except going across what the farm now owns as the mitigation site. This down here, the city also owns, so this is a right-of-way. That's not where the Pacific Topsoils or driveways right here. This is also owned by the city. And then there's an easement that goes across here to get to that. Not exactly sure why that parcel was picked, but this is a parcel that if you're walking around out there, it is beat up and it's hard gravel and it's nothing grows on it sort of thing. So it's different from the rest of this in terms of it's not a wetland. And so I think somebody decided it might be of future use. There is a, in the development agreement, or excuse me, the, the settlement agreement with Pacific Topsoils, this site here has an easement for utilities and has the opportunity for us to acquire a vehicular access through this if we didn't, uh, under some conditions. Basically, they're not allowed to build anything in this area. So you could potentially someday connect this way if you wanted to. When we were talking about the public works facility, we looked at this site as a possibility. If you did that and connected this with some bridge, because this is really wet now, that would be an opportunity. We decided that wasn't big enough, but that's just kind of connecting the, the dots from what we had before. So this is really what, what's going to face staff and council to talk about. And these are at the very high level, the considerations. Fundamentally, we all want to preserve and maintain this natural area. So there's, and we, fortunate there's interest in various volunteer groups who get the PCNA group that's come and talked to us, but there's other groups as well out there probably. Potential partnerships with other agencies, maybe we talk to Adopt a Stream, the kinds of folks, there's been some interest from them. Possible grant opportunities, particularly if it's a government agency or a semi-governmental agency, maybe there's grants that are available, wouldn't be available to a volunteer group. So there's some things you could do to get some money on this if we decide to go ahead. It is somewhat unique around here in terms of a natural amenity. There is a very similar thing called the Narbeck Wetland Sanctuary up by Boeing headquarters. If you think about that off of Seaway, it was actually created out of nothingness as mitigation for when they extended the runway at Payne Field. And it's a pretty wonderful thing. It has a lot of similar functions and features. We've used that as an opportunity to say, okay, what does it cost the county to do that, to maintain that? It's a little bit different, it's got a restroom, this won't have a restroom unless we decide to put one there. But anyway, it's a, that is unique and it's an attractor. And people have talked about it, one of our citizens last night said this is a kind of attraction thing. I think this is an opportunity to bring people to Mill Creek to see something that is pretty, uh, pretty wonderful in a lot of ways. The beavers are out there, they're fun to watch, the beavers also cause trouble, so it's fun to watch that too. We, we would have to deal with directly with the issues. Right now, we're not dealing with these because it's owned by the farm, but there is a certain amount of trash pickup that happens, it's pretty good. The, the volunteers that are out there now keep it pretty well maintained. But from time to time, a mattress appears in the road or a refrigerator appears in the road or things like that that we've taken care of or worked with the farm to get rid of. So there's always that condition where you've got fifty acres of uninhabited property. Treating the vegetation, it is, it has gotten to the point where it's probably too much. You know, we asked it to be natural, but we also need to maintain that trail. So that would be some work to be done is how you would, how you would trim that back. And the footbridge is going to wear out over time, it's going to need bollards replaced, things like that. Trespassing vandalism issues, there are trespassing issues now, people go out there and homeless issues that we would have to deal with. We kind of deal with them now, but they're fundamentally responsible to the farm, they would become ours. And the beaver and the fish-bearing stream issues don't come without some obligations. But again, or I would say as a city, are we better to, able to handle that than a private owner? We probably are better off with our ability to work with other, under, other governmental agencies. There has been a public request or it will be a public request for amenities. You know, it makes sense to have a trailhead or a restroom or connecting paths kind of things. But when somebody says, let's put in a play structure, let's put in a paved parking lot, let's put in a jungle gym, let's put in a building. We're going to have to have the wherewithal to say, what does, what aligns with the natural Penny Creek Natural Area aspect of it as opposed to an active park? So it's a little bit different than some of our other parks. So next steps, staff will be studying the pros and cons, looking what we think it would cost. And it's hard to know that, but we do have some history that, with terms of what the farm has done. So we'd estimate those costs, either if we self-perform them or if we contracted it. We've got lots of volunteers that'd like to help, but you've got to remember, you can't really count on volunteers for fabric and come and go. But that's, I think it's one of the considerations. I do think this is the kind of property where at least the neighbors are very interested and have been taking care of it even before the farm took it over. We would get city council and public input on what we want it to be and does it make sense to take this on? The mid-block crossing study already mentioned, I think there was some safe streets for all funded safety, safety action plan items for thirty-fifth. There may be an opportunity, if we get that grant from the feds, to use some of that money towards the crossings. Maybe we don't even need that mid-block crossing analysis. Timing on when we hear back from the US government is kind of fuzzy right now. It should have been in November, we don't know, and we'll hear back on that Monday money. Sorry, for the typo there, fro instead of four. Agree on the state of maintenance for conveyance? There's been some talk about, well, can't we make the farm do something to trim some of this natural vegetation back away from the trail? And I've looked at it and there's nothing, it's pretty, the development agreement was pretty scant on that. And there's nothing that says go trim natural bushes. It is a buffer area, it's a natural area. We do not really allow people to trim natural stuff. And so it kind of falls in a crack. And so I doubt we can force the farm to go and maintain things. I think we will have to figure out how to interpret our own code or add to our code to say, how do we maintain this to, to preserve a pedestrian trail, to keep it safe and keep it useful, but still, still, uh, fulfill the purpose of the, uh, of the native growth that's out there. There'd be a legal conveyance step to this and we could assume the ownership. Ideally, I think they would like to see us resolve this in the summer of two thousand twenty-five. Depending on how you look at the dates, it's probably May twenty-something.
Summer twenty-sixth.
Yeah, that's a, a point in time that the developer and Tom Rogers kind of settle on. So I think that's probably a good date. There's another way you could look at it, say it's August, but probably December, probably May twenty-sixth is the right date. And then the pros plan, we were parks, recreation, open space planned. And so we'd have to integrate this into our pros plan and talk about the O and M parts of it. So those are the steps we laid out. I think we're down to questions.
Can you talk about the access? Because during the winter, I recall that the access is flooded for several months. And I understand that that's not an issue that arises on the farm parcel that we could ask them to fix. It's arising from our covert in our right-of-way, is that correct?
Right there's a jog in the right-of-way, and it turns out that right-of-way, the gate is about, oh, sorry. The gate is at about where this is. And so the stream, stream was, Pacific Topsoil's kind of deviated the stream. You can find old aerials where the stream is that it coming this way, like you'd expect, it comes and goes kind of this way. They probably dried it out so they could mine peat on this side. So part of what the farm ended up doing was making sure the stream actually goes this way. It's all in the white line, you can't really see it. But it goes through a covert underneath this road. And so a covert, that covert is probably inactive or blocked. If you're going to do something about fixing it, it's probably going to turn into, have to turn into a box covert because this is a fish-bearing stream, so it's not inconsequential. That's the kind of thing we can go to ecology and Department of Fish and Wildlife and say, we'd love to have a grant to fix this up and make it fish-passable. Nothing's free, but I think we could get some help with that. But that is where it's often low. And what we did this past winter was throw a bunch of rock on top of it to kind of level it out on both sides. And so you'd throw a rock on the top of it for a while, but probably in a couple of years, you'd say, let's, just do something with that covert.
Okay, other questions? Councilor Batic?
Uh, you mentioned the mitigations the farm needs to do. Has all those mitigations been accomplished?
Yes, they've been accomplished. So they are required to maintain that off, that off-site mitigation, excuse me, this one, the critical areas onsite, they're going to maintain this forever. They have to, we'll keep after them. But the five-year plan for that had the proper planet, plant establishment. Same thing for the onsite one, the five-year period is done. And so they've done, they've done what they need to do, so it's ready to be conveyed. I was, some people said, why don't we take this a couple of years? And so they've done, they've done what they need to do. So it's ready to be conveyed. I was, some people said, why don't we take this a couple of years ago? And I said, let's wait until we're sure it works. And there's no hurry to do it. Uh, but so that part of it is done from their standpoint. They've got their final report.
Councilor Cavalry?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thanks Director Todd. Um, I, I think it would be helpful for, for me and maybe the entire council to get a copy of the development agreement with the farm. Uh, this way we can maybe see if they've met all the criteria for us to take it over. I know there were certain conditions. Um, some of us were around then that as you were, um, that if we were to take ownership of this property, um, certain threshold or benchmarks had to be eclipsed. So, so I would certainly like to see that. Uh, one of my questions are, is that has the city estimated what it might cost? Do we have a, a, a fact or, or I mean, a figure per acre, what it might cost us?
No, we haven't really done that yet. No.
Yeah, I think that's one of the big worries. And, and as much as free land sounds great is, and I know you went at great length talking about all the maintenance that's necessary and, and the covert work that's going to be necessary and the all of that. So, so I, I think there's a, there's, there's, this is a, just want everybody to understand that this is a, a lot more than just some free land for the city. It's, it's, um, there's a price tag that comes with that. And so I, I, I hope that we can maybe make sure as council member Paddock pointed out that the farm has met their every prong that they are supposed to get to at this point before we were to take ownership, if we were to take ownership. And my next question is, is are there advantages to just allowing the farm, farm to continue to maintain this and just hold them accountable?
I think the advantage would be, we, we wouldn't have city money into it in terms of maintaining it. The disadvantage would be that they could close it to the public and therefore it would not be open to the public. If it was closed, I, I'm of the opinion that open and active is less likely to have homeless and vandalism than closed. And so I think that the times we've seen what has been closed up is not, not helpful. You know, before they took it on, some bad stuff happened out there. You know, there was some old, there was a lot of big fire and a lot of stuff that goes on. So I think we're better off that way. Are they really in the, in the business of, they're, remember their residential community, their business is running residential community. They've sold off the commercial part. And so their ability to maintain be, or deal with beaver activity, for instance. Uh, if we don't deal with beaver activity, we have flooding issues other places. And so that's the kind of thing that we would end up still having to work with them on how do they maintain proper flow for the stream that still would be a fish blocking covert that we would have to deal with regardless. At some point in time, that's, that's kind of a scary thing, but that's what our state mandate is in terms of fish bearing, uh, streams. So, yeah.
And, and I totally agree with you. And that's, that's why I raised that point. And, and I think so, some of the, um, expectations that we had on the farm have not come to fruition. So, um, I just want to make sure that we're not adding insult to injury and, and costing the city more than we have to. Thank you.
And we will, so in the packet, I, I just included this section on this of the development agreement. We'll get you the entire development agreement.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I agree. I would like to have the, um, the actual development agreement. I think we've already discussed making sure everybody has that for lots of different discussions. Um, so also I, I am really in favor of us trying to figure out how to take the nature preserve, but I'm very aware that we don't have money. And so there'll be a lot of things that we have to look at. So I'm looking forward to our future study sessions and the information to come forward so we can look at what, what the cost will be, how we can actually pay for this. But also look at the repercussions, like you mentioned, of not taking it on because I feel like having our police go through, having, like you said, is going to keep the element for potential of crime going on in this closed off space. So I think we need to take all that into consideration. But we will have to figure out how we're going to pay for this. Um, also I want to be on the record saying that when we did this, this is a mitigation area. And I am very much in favor of keeping it as close to natural as possible, should we decide to take it on. And I am not in favor of adding any new structures, any new bathrooms, anything like that, because I feel like that also takes away from the purpose of the mitigation to keep it natural and it should be kept as close to what it is right now as possible. And so I just want to make sure I get that out there before anybody starts daydreaming about other ideas. So, um, that's all I've got. Thanks.
Councilwoman Ellison?
Yeah, the out of compliance covert, that's in our right of way.
Yeah.
Right now. Okay. Thank you. Could you point it out one more time?
Oh, sure. Uh, let me go back. I think it's easier to see on one of these earlier slides. This So this is the gravel driveway that goes in right there. And you can see where this jog is. As best we know, the stream kind of comes down this side and it kind of gets into a big puddle there. And the covert is probably there. You can't really see it very well because it's all filled in with stuff because nobody's maintained it since Pacific Topsoil's, uh, got to vacate at the site. But if the covert right now is about there and it probably is not in good condition, either it filled up with silt or it's crushed or whatever. It's probably a concrete pipe. And remember when we redid the thirty fifth avenue bridge, we were going to put in a big concrete pipe in there. And then we got wind of the, what the state might make us do in the future. So remember, we added a bunch of money to the bridge project to make it what's called a box covert. So we essentially a square bottom that's low enough that the fish can always get through instead of a round covert where they might have a drop off in low water conditions. And so that's, we're facing that. We're going to face that on Seattle Hill Road. Um, as Dan talked about a couple, couple of sessions ago, there's a fish block, potential fish blocking covert there. The state is under injunction from the federal government to deal with these. And so those are kind of the main focus. That's one of the things that I think when I used to go to Olympia and you guys go to Olympia, remind the state, keep reminding the state, our state legislators, that while they're busy fixing all of theirs that they're under injunction. Every stream has the county, the city and private landowners also have fish blocking oververts. So if you really want to open up a, a fish bearing stream, it involves a lot of partnerships. And that's something cities don't have money for. Counties don't have many, money for, private landowners don't have many for. So I don't know when they will make us do that, but I would say if we went in to fix it, we would be smart to fix it with the right kind of covert instead of just doing like the farmers would have done is pull out the pipe, put it in and throw some gravel on top.
Yeah, I think that's the important point. We're not out of compliance. It's a covert that's going to need to be replaced. The state is under a, a uh, judgment in a lawsuit from the tribes to fix all the culverts. And so the counties and cities are anticipating, they've not, we have not been sued yet. But as Director Todd said, if and when we wanted to do any improvements to that driveway, like we did to thirty fifth, we'd have to get through ecology and fish and wildlife and they'd require us to make it non-fish blocking. But we are not out of compliance as of now.
Proper statement. You're right. Yeah.
And, and didn't those, um, didn't the size of the covert change if you're, if you're going to do any new construction? Didn't it change from like eighteen feet to twenty-four feet when we did thirty fifth avenue?
Thirty fifth, it was going to be like two big fifty-two inch pipes, I remember. And then we figured out that wasn't going to satisfy the state and we didn't want, if, if we got under a compliance issue. So we ended up making it a box covert. I can't remember the dimensions, but it went from two round pipes that would have been perfectly adequate for the flow to a box covert because that shape was important for what we, that we didn't get in a problem in the future.
Other questions? Not seen any. Thank you. Look forward to further discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to our school resource officer presentation.
Can I move this? Okay.
Yep.
Okay. See if this clicker works. Okay. Uh, I'm Officer Rory Mundwether. I'm the school resource officer over at Jackson High School. Uh, my partner, Nick Wood couldn't be here today. Uh, he's, uh, over at Heatherwood Middle School. And so I'm sure he'd be bummed, but he's dealing with a family issue. Um, okay, cool. That's the big part. So if the clicker works, I, I have to move around. I can't. I'll, I'll be, I'll be mindful. Uh, but thank you, council for having me over here and being able to come and talk about this and everybody else who's here. We, many of you have kids or have had kids at Jackson High School, Heatherwood Middle School, Mill Creek Elementary to some extent on the SRO side of things. Um, but I wanted to come and talk about what SROs are, what we do, so that if you guys ever were wondering that you, you know, can be better informed with that. This is what an SRO is. Look at all those letters. And I, just like a cop, I put them all in caps too. So, um, you could all read this, but yeah, it is. And in many ways, that's the reason why this is the way that it is, is, uh, that it explains what the SRO does and can do per RCW. I'm not going to reread it. But where does all that come from? And back here from? So the RCW twenty-eight A three-two-zero-one-two-four. Again, it's the ideas that the, the concept is in here. It's spelling out the law. And what they've done here, what they're pulling all this stuff from is something called House Bill twelve fourteen. And that came into play, I believe in twenty fifteen. So a little background on me. Uh, this is my sixth year as an SRO for the city of Mill Creek. Uh, previously from twenty eleven to twenty fifteen was the school resource officer at both Jackson and Heatherwood Middle School. The this came around in twenty fifteen. So my initial go at things did not see any of this. It was kind of a different world. There was different expectations and some of those were put into place for good reasons. Many people may have seen stuff online or in the news or in neighboring cities and counties that their view on school resource officers were too concerning. They decided to go against that. Well, hopefully I can explain the benefits to you all about why SROs are so great. But what, what all that did was it, uh, asked the state to come up with some standards of training. And I can tell you that myself and Officer Wood have completed that training, uh, among several other SRO trainings that we've taken. But, uh, just to kind of touch on a couple of these, we've got trauma-informed approaches to working with youth. That's kind of what all cops are doing now. We have, a lot of us are taking trauma-informed. There's stuff about de-escalation in here. Um, uh, disparities in the use of force and arrests of children, a lot of great concepts, a lot of really great um, trainings to, uh, focus on. So what that, what that boils down to is after you've got that good understanding, um, you can go to work. And so you have about a year, just to explain, you have about a year to complete all of that. Um, and, uh, that's done either online or in person. And it's put through to our local, uh, educational service district, one eighty-nine. Um, and those, those are all standards from OSPI. So a, uh, the school resource officer kind of serves three major functions. I've got three. There we go. The counselor mentor, the teacher and the law enforcement officer. So, uh, this is kind of a concept that is pushed by the National Association of School Resource Officers or NASRO. And it's one of the organizations that we get a lot of our training as SROs from. Uh, the counselor portion, you could see that as being like a role model. Um, talk to kids about home issues, school issues, gangs, drug and alcohol, tobacco. Um, and it's just, we offer a safe location for kids to speak. Um, there's nothing more rewarding in all of this stuff as a school resource officer than being able to make those connections with students. And sometimes they don't have anyone to talk to. And we end up being the one, lo and behold, the guy in the uniform, um, or gal. Uh, teacher, we have opportunities to do class presentations, um, and interact with students in the class. And we can talk on a lot of different topics, whether it's, um, constitutional stuff, uh, drugs and alcohol. I did a really great DUI, uh, course one day or for every single class and a health class. And it was fantastic. We were able to um, go through a whole process, including a DUI investigation. Kids walking, turning with the funny glasses on. Uh, a lot of good times. And then of course, the law enforcement side of this. And that's, you know, we're there for sometimes the worst case scenarios, hopefully not. Um, but we're prepared for that. Um, and we're also there if there happens to be, uh, something that raises up more into our level. And I'm going to get into that here in a second. So what is this, what is not a school resource officer? School resource officer is not a school employee. I am actually, as it says on this little name tag, if I forget, a contractor. Um, we're contracted through, and that language changed really in the House Bill twelve fourteen to better specify what it is our role was. We're not a school administrator. There are some days I wish I could, but that's not happening. I'm not a school disciplinarian. We don't deal with school, uh, policy issues. Uh, so if a kid gets out of pocket in the school student handbook, that's not my job. I am there to always have great conversations and try and build rapport with kids, but, uh, sending them to in-school suspension is not my game. Uh, not a taxi driver. There are cases where a kid is left alone at school and we have to try and do that, but we would do that with every kid out there. But, uh, we don't provide free rides home every day or anything like that. And we're not assigned to the school for only active assailant response or responses to crime. I have to bold the only. This is of course why we're there, but that's not the sole reason. If a school has the ability to handle it, uh, as far as the situation goes, um, we'll let them handle it. That's, we try and make sure that if there's anything that they can handle on their level, that it doesn't become a police issue. Uh, if there's a safety concern, we'll always play some type of role. Um, the important part here is there's some discussions in circles about uh, a phrase that they call the school to prison pipeline. And the school prison to pipeline concept is that with police officers in the schools, that, um, we are doing some kind of job to get kids into the juvenile justice system. Now, even twenty eleven, twenty fifteen, before House Bill twelve fourteen came out, this was not my, not my approach to doing school, the, to being a school resource officer. But there are concerns, valid concerns that people do have. And OSPI and our ESD and our school district have addressed that. And so have our police department. So, um, we certainly try and make sure that if it's a a low-level crime, a schoolyard fight, something like that, that we try and get the school district to deal with that or the principals to deal with that as much as possible. Of course, we will take reports when needed and document things when needed. Um, everything is case by case. So what is, uh, the difference between SROs and our patrol officers that we have out there? We, as school resource officers, are highly trained to work with youth, uh, relationship, uh, diversions from arrest. So that's our focus is to try and get kids to change the behaviors that they have. And we can do that because we can spend more time with the kids and that's fantastic. Uh, we have, um, uh, some FERPA or the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act privileges. Certainly not what other staff or staff at the schools have. So we're able to access some information that the kids have as far as phone numbers, addresses, if we need to follow up with something. Um, but I can't check the grades or check to see what, if they're on time in class every day. So, uh, we know the students. That's a difference from patrol. Some certainly our patrol guys and gals know uh, a lot of the youth in town, but, um, they, uh, we, we, we get that time to get, really get to know the kids, the, the ones that are having troubles and the ones that are doing great and having great days every day. We get to know them all. Uh, we know the staff at the school, which allows us to make that communication with patrol so much better. So if something happens at the school or is related somehow, we're able to make those connections with other patrol staff. And, uh, reporting and oversight of use of force. So there is a special thing now through OSPI that we're now, um, we have to document types of force that are used in schools on top of the other reporting. Uh, reporting that we have to do for uses of force. So it's an additional report, so to speak. Not to knock the patrol guys, because I still am one in many ways here. Uh, it's, uh, no specific training to work with youth. That doesn't mean that they don't get training and it doesn't mean that they're not focused in that. Uh, they don't have the FERPA privileges. They don't in general know the students like we do. And they don't know the staff like we do. And they, uh, they don't have any special reporting uh, requirement for the use of force through, uh, OSPI. Henry M. Jackson High School, uh, right now I got the numbers. This is pretty fresh stuff here. Uh, two thousand two hundred twenty-six plus students, one hundred eighty plus staff, uh, ninth through twelfth grade, and it covers about forty-two point seven nine acres. It is forty-two point seven nine acres. It's not about forty-two. That's really specific. Uh, the accessory office gave me that number. So uh Heatherwood Middle School, one thousand one hundred and two plus students, seventy plus staff, sixth through eighth grade, twenty-nine point two one acres. So the reason I put that up there is that's a whole lot of people and a whole lot of space. And the importance of having specialized, trained school resource officers in there. This is, these are like little towns and they have their own sports teams, they got their own council, so to speak, if you want to put it to the administrators, you know, they've got people that they need to answer to. They've got little jobs, some there are student stores and all these things. They're within the city of Mill Creek, of course, but they are their own little towns in so many ways. And so being able to have those specialized SROs in those spots is super important. Kind of put a little to day in the life of an SRO here, um. Kind of painted out here, I'll try and go down the list quick for you guys. But uh it's be present on the arrival and dismissal of of students. Uh, patrol hallways, the exteriors of the school, assist in the supervision of students at lunch. So I'm there talking with kids, keeping my eye out, making sure, checking bathrooms, doing all that sort of stuff. Um, and that's because the majority of fights and behavioral issues happen during break times, um not always in classes. Uh, threat assessments, if there's a student that's posed a risk or posted something, for example, online, we take part in threat assessments with other staff members and sometimes, depending on the level of severity, uh folks from the OSPI. Emergency drills, we, I'm part of our emergency response team at the school. We go through, we plan these things out, we talk about what works, what doesn't. It all sounds familiar with s- city government and how we all do our jobs here. Um, mon- monitor behavioral changes in the students. Officer Wood pointed this one out to me, says, we gotta add something about monitoring behavioral changes in students. And I hadn't put it down there. It's fantastic. We have so many great kids that show up so many days feeling so great and they're doing great. And if we're not connecting ourselves with the students and noticing changes, we will miss those kids that come in every day happy and then one day they just start not showing up or they're not engaged. And that's time for us to sit down and play into that counseling part of that triad. I already mentioned dismissal of students, uh classic uh classic police statement here. Additional tasks may include, but are not limited to law enforcement presence at athletic events, plays, dances, graduations, and grad night, which is a lot of fun. That's a great way that I can keep your kids safe as they're enjoying uh uh their last hurrah with their s- uh fellow classmates. And that's what you guys were all waiting for. Uh, and for those at home, I can describe it, it's uh two great mustaches and some bikes and some shorts. Um, we love getting on the bikes and patrolling that area. I mean, again, this, we got acres to do it and uh we make it look good, I can, I gotta say that, so um. I tried to breeze through this because I know this is a busy night for a lot of you guys. So um I, again, appreciate your time uh that you've given me to talk about this. Do you, does anyone have any questions that I might be able to ask? Councilmember Duque?
You saw me leaning forward?
I did.
Before I even got to press it. Thank you so much for coming, I really appreciated this. And as I looked through the presentation, um prepping for today's meeting, I like jotted down some questions.
Oh.
And so, and other people might know, my children are still in elementary school, so we're we're not there yet. Uh, they will be though, next year and at Heatherwood, so that'll be a whole new, whole new life for me. But what happens if one of you are sick? Who then comes in, what's, what's that?
Yeah, the, so I could, we could go, we could play it like one person is sick or one person is at training, that's another issue. And and as of recent, we had that happen. Trainings and illnesses do happen from time to time. And so uh Officer Wood and I communicate really regularly. So if s- one of us had, was sick, the other one would stop by the school and check in on him and see if they need anything. By having this, these are our key cards and we can get into any school in the district. So we get to know each other's staff. I know the staff over at Heatherwood really, really well because I was doing that before Nick uh got the position. Uh, so it's as seamless as it certainly can be for the two uh two schools. Um, trainings again pop up as well. If we're both sick, we have a great uh patrol staff and sergeants that make sure to go out there and uh touch base with them and see what they can do. We communicate with our staff at those schools as well. So they, they have a good idea of what they need to do in the this case, this case, this case, this case.
Very helpful. It was one of those things that I went, oh, I don't know anything about that. The other thing I had is, thank you for your numbers on what Jackson High School currently is. I was looking up, um uh Cascade was uh approximately one thousand seven hundred and two and Everett High School, just focusing on Everett School District, is one thousand six hundred and sixty-nine. So the fact that Jackson is over two thousand is a lot. Do you know, um obviously they're not city of Mill Creek, but how many SROs they have at their uh campuses?
Yeah, so the Everett Public Schools, uh their plan is to have um a school resource officer at every high school and middle school. I know that Everett, um, the Everett Police Department does as well as they can. In many situations, it's, comes down to the numbers. The, that's where their focus is, is in the high schools and the middle schools. And to my knowledge, I know that there's, I think Gateway Middle School might have a, I I think they've, they've figured that part out or they're figuring it out. But most of the schools are covered. And if they're not covered by one sole SRO for each school, they have two schools that they're working with. So they they try and stay in communication with each other.
It was just, it was one of those things that I realized, we're so much larger. Um, and to just have uh one person seemed like quite a bit. Um, and it's, and it's nice, I guess, that that Heatherwood and Jackson High School are so close, even though you just showed the amount of land, like the amount of land you'd have to cover.
Yeah.
Um, but is one of those things that I just, I'm curious, do you know, um, and I can always follow up afterwards, um i- if there's like certain rules of like how, or recommendations maybe of like how many SROs per student population? Because I know there's rules about that for teachers and things like that, so.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. And I, so I guessing probably wouldn't help anybody out. Um, I can tell you, I appreciate, as somebody who has done the uh Jackson and Heatherwood schools, um and done them both, and I did them for four years before I came back to the SRO position and then did a little bit into there, um, that can be a lot of work. Um, and it's tough to make, um, to provide the kind of attention that a lot of the staff over there and a lot of the kids need uh by splitting one for one. To have an officer at both schools has been a a massive improvement to that. So I know that it's making a difference here in the kids when I go to visit. Because Nick Wood will come over and say hi to me and I'll go over there and say hi to him and the kids, they just love him over there. And I'm like, gosh, that's great. So um they're, they're, by being able to have your own SRO, it's kind of like, oh, yeah, I've got, he's mine or that's yours, you know, type of thing. So that's been a big help.
So competitions then? There should be like a corner.
Well, they, they all work to me. So, you know, like it's, there's the young ones, they, they all want to uh get to Officer Rory, as they call me, so.
Perfect, thank you very much for your time.
Councilmember Kevlary?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thanks for coming out, thanks for being here and giving us the explanation. One, one of, I guess, a parent's biggest fears, and I'm going to ask the ugly question, is, is active shooter. And so how, how robust is our training and and how well-incorporated is the faculty or the staff at the schools in regards to um training and 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 what to do and?
Yeah.
Educating the kids?
Yeah, thank you. The um, we're about to hold a uh department training per shift and to go over some of the specifics on that and how to respond. Um, it's been in the works for a little bit and we're waiting on a couple pieces of equipment. I would say that uh we're certainly um as robust as we can. Um, the problem is, is that there is always something else and there's always more training opportunities and there's always new, and I, it's, it's unfortunate, there's always new horrific trends that are coming into play. I think that the Snohomish County SRO group, which we usually meet about once every month, um is very in the loop on things. And we just had a, a meeting with some federal folks and went over some pretty serious topics. Uh, all of, all of us have this great understanding of what it is we're doing and we communicate with all of our different police departments and try and get them brought in on what's needed. The staff uh is always trying to learn more too. And there's, it's a different dynamic. You know, coming from a police world, there's, like, we're always about, yeah, we're going to go training, we'll try and uh, you know, learn how to look extra Velcro-y and stuff, you know, whatever the jokes might be. Uh, s- s- school staff aren't wired that way. They don't, I don't, to my knowledge, uh, teachers don't have a, a class that they take in college about school um or active shooter situations. And it's an unfortunate reality that that may be needed someday, if not now, if not yesterday. Um, but uh learning, it, it takes a special type of police officer to enter this world of education and be able to communicate the serious needs of those types of situations and to convey them in such a way that you get the buy-in from those types of careers that are all around you. So we do a pretty darn good job of that at both schools, I know. And um we're, we're always looking to improve. So, you know, as robust as we can, I'll get more robust if I, if it's available, you know what I mean? So um, yeah, I think if that answers your question.
It does, thank you so much.
Chief has a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. In, in regards to what Officer Monweller is discussing, he's doing work with the school district the best he can to educate the, the, the staff there. Some of the things that we are working on as a department is, and regionally for that matter, is going to be addressed in our next year's res- uh police refresher skills training regionally through um all the agencies in Snohomish County um that are part of the group, which is going to include that active threat training. We're trying to make it, as, as this is a large mutual aid response, we're trying to standardize that training as much as possible. So we are working on that uh coming for the next year and it's going to be continued throughout. It, we've had a lot of attrition in law enforcement. We've had people over the last few years come and go. We have a very new staff and that's been recognized by command staff at all the agencies in, in the area. And so we're now building up that training so that we're doing the best we can to prepare for what we hope is uh something that, you know, yes, i- it's, we don't want to see that day come, but we definitely want to be prepared as best as we can to, to address it.
Excellent, thanks, Chief.
Councilman Paddock?
Thanks for coming out. Um, your, your demeanor and enthusiasm uh is, is really palpable. And um I was, I was born into, I married into, raised educators, um, and one of whom was in the Everett School District as a principal for, for quite some time, as an educator and a principal for quite some time. And, and the SRO role was, from her perspective as a principal, a really critical one in building that relationship in a healthy way with law enforcement, right? Because that's not always the way it might be felt in a particular community. She happened to also be a gateway, which has a different relationship many times with with law enforcement. And it was a good way to also role model for those kids, kind of what that relationship could look like. And, and um it was something that, again, through her eyes, I saw as something that was super valuable and just the work that you do is, is super important. And um it's really a lot of times from what I'm told, based on the training and the personality of the individuals that, that's doing that role, and you clearly fit that mold.
I appreciate it. And that is one of my, one of my favorite things uh to uh achieve with relationships in this job as a school resource officer, is sometimes you run into the person who may have had a, a, a bad history with law enforcement. And to have that opportunity to talk to them and really, you know, get on the same page and, and, and it's a very empathetic position as a law enforcement officer to be a, a s- school resource officer. So it's uh, it takes time to build those relationships. And when you do make those inroads with people, it's so rewarding because you know that, you know, we're, we're, we're breaking down stereotypes, we're meeting people as humans, and that's, that means a lot to me, so.
The, the community wins. And it's great that it's good for you, selfishly, it's good for the community.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation and thank you for all you do, appreciate it very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, if there are no objections, we're going to make at least one adjustment to the uh agenda. I'd like to move up item nine G, the Art Park and Recreation Board appointments, is the objection? Okay, I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem for that then?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we had a um, we had an opening on the um Art Beautification Board and we had um a couple openings on the Parks and Recreation Board due to expired terms. So um we met and interviewed, it was myself, Councilmember Allison and Councilmember Duque. Um, and then we had a wonderful um interview, getting to know Antonia Rice. And so um, and then other great applicants uh were wanting to continue. And so we are happy tonight to move to reappoint Deep Mangott to the Art Beautification Board for a three-year term ending October thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? The motion passes six zero as Councilmember Paddock had stepped out.
All right, and I would also like to move to reappoint Ariane McDonald and Austin Hendrickson to the Park and Recreation Board for three-year terms, ending October thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. And to appoint Antonia Rice to the Park and Recreation Board for a three-year term, also ending October thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion again passes six zero. Councilmember Paddock is still out. And since he's still out, I'm going to skip the other adjustment I was going to add for and we'll move into our public hearing, which is on, public hearing on the proposed twenty twenty-six regular property tax levy. Tonight, we'll be holding a public hearing on adopting proposed twenty twenty-six tax levy. The hearing will be conducted under the rules for legislative public hearings set forth in Resolution twenty twenty-one dash six zero four. We adopted these rules on June eighth, twenty twenty-one. I'll briefly summarize the procedures for the public hearing. First, we will receive a brief staff report on the proposed twenty twenty-six property tax levy. Following the staff report and responses to any questions that council may have, I'll ask for a motion to open the public hearing. Next, assuming there is a motion, a second, and an affirmative vote, we will open the public hearing. The hearing will last up to one hour unless council votes to authorize additional time. Persons wishing to testify and who are present in council chambers shall sign in on the sign-in sheet and will be called in the order in which they signed. Persons participating online also will be given an opportunity to testify by raising their hands and I will call on them. Each person's testimony is limited to three minutes. When all who asked to speak have completed their testimony or a lot, or the allotted one-hour time has, limit has expired, I ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Following completion of the public hearing, council will then discuss and take action on the ordinance adopting the proposed twenty twenty-six property tax levy. Are there any questions on our process? Hearing none, uh I will, and prior to opening the public comment, I'm going to invite our city manager, Martin Yamamoto, and our finance director, Armina Kijoti Lumbad, to present information regarding the proposed twenty twenty-six property tax levy.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I'll take a brief moment just to kind of kick this off, but I think it's important just to say a few words before we, before we start this presentation. Probably about five minutes here. I, I think it's important to uh first acknowledge, I think, that the progress that we've made on council's uh third priority, which is financial viability. Um, in January this year, just ten months ago, council tasked us with looking at uh five different levers. And I'll go over not each one, but rather just kind of, just a preview of kind of where we're at with each one. Uh, the annexation study, uh we'll have a, the study done in December. Uh, the discussion on annexation will take place in the retreat in January of, of, of next year. So we're very close to bringing that forward. Uh, the second lever, attraction of new businesses. And the third lever, South Town Center is a new destination for visitors. Today, we have planned to give you a, a preview of uh the framework that uh Director Ryan's put together to give uh you an idea of kind of what our proposal is and kind of what that framework for economic development would look like. And that would encompass addressing those, those uh two and three levers. The fourth one is existing, looking at existing and potential fee-based services. As you know, we've made a lot of progress on the fee, fees, uh internal, uh, the city's fees that we've adjusted and, and added, uh, we'll be adding to our code soon. And so um I think next month is, as soon as next month, we'll be approving those. So um a lot of progress on that one as well. And finally, um, new taxes, whether it's taxing districts or utility taxes, something that was planned. Something that was planned for us to bring forward in twenty twenty-seven, as a deliverable, we're bringing forward actually right now, eh, this year. So, um, it's great to, to see that we're actually um, a kind of head schedule that council set for the, for the next three years, um, and bringing those, and bringing those to you forward now. Um, and that was a deliverable for year three. Now, stepping back a bit and looking at year two, um, one of the deliverables was actually to commence discussions on addressing the potential deficit. And, and as we get closer to twenty twenty, I'm sure we'll, we'll discuss that uh, next year. Was also to identify additional options for revenue op- uh, for revenues. And that's actually, we're commencing um, this year as well. So we're moving that forward. In twenty twenty-five, council tasked us with a deliverable of looking at trade-offs between, across contracts and staffing. And we started doing that right off to get it go. As soon as I became your city manager, we, we've started doing that already. And so we'll continue doing that, as we start to move forward and, and addressing um, what our needs and resources will be um, needed going forward. So, I just wanna give council a brief update, kind of the progress we made on financial viability. I think um, finance director and, and staff has done a tremendous job of actually pushing these up further than we expected. And so, as we move into December, we'll give you a full update on the full, uh, uh, um, kind of all, all KPIs and kind of where we're at with all the strategic priorities. And so, uh, with that, I'll hand over the, hand this over to the finance director to talk about that uh, one, that fifth lever, um, utility taxes, property taxes, and all the revenue options. So, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Yamamoto. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff and those joining us um, in the council chambers as well as those online. Um, so we have been talking about our revenues for a while now. Um, so in, I'm just gonna go back um, through the timeline to, to um, provide uh, some perspective to our audience. So on October seventh, we provided city council with revenue updates. Um, speaking or um, talking about uh, the general fund, uh, the service water fund, streets, as well as our capital um, funds. Um, on October fourteenth, we provided um, city council with revenue options as well as the preliminary um, property tax levy. Um, last um, Tuesday, we talked about, or we had uh, the first public hearing for the twenty twenty-six proposed property tax levy options. And tonight, we're having the final um, uh, public hearing on the matter as well as hopefully an adoption of an ordinance uh, to levy a twenty twenty-six product tax levy. Next week, we're hoping to um, do, um, if council decides to give us direction to move forward with the utility tax and transportation benefit district um, public hearing as well as the adoption of the ordinances. Um, on the twenty-sixth of November, we are required to submit the a- adopted ordinance and certification to the Snohomish County for property tax um, processing or billing. And then in December, uh, we're hoping to bring back uh, the mid-buy adjustment for twenty twenty-six, uh, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, as well as the CIP budget amendments. So just uh, uh, again, as a background, property taxes um, in the state of Washington is a budget-based system. So the legislative body um, establishes the total amount of property tax revenues to be generated, um, subject of course to certain restrictions. And then um, that amount, the levy amount is then uh, allocated based off of a rate to uh, the property owners. And that calculation is you take, we take the uh, levy amount that the legislative body intends to um, assess. We divide that by the citywide assessed value to get to a specific rate. And then that rate is applied to the property owner's home value based off of a per thousand basis. Um, last, last Tuesday, um, after the initial public hearing, we received the following feedback from city council. Well, one, we received one public input. And then from city council, uh, we, we got direction to eliminate property tax options D, which is thirty-five percent, and option E, which is a forty-one percent profit tax increase. Um, in addition, uh, we were given direction to model um, two scenarios, one A, and it's one A because it's still based off of the first option of property tax, which is one percent. Um, and in addition, uh, we ha- we added the add-ons as requested. A utility tax at six percent, a transportation district for twenty dollars per vehicle on a graduated basis, and a citywide fee increase and the revised staff allocation, um, and then the gap of the deficit funded by fund balance. Scenario two was a one percent property tax, uh, plus the add-ons, a utility tax at zero percent. Uh, transportation benefit district for twenty dollars, um, and then the citywide fee increase as well as the revised staff allocation and an expenditure cut of approximately one point five million. So I'll turn it over to City Manager Yamamoto to discuss the impacts of the uh, one point five million budget cut.
All right. Thanks, Finance Director. Uh, now I'm gonna cover um, kind of what the impact would be if the city would take a one point five million cut. Now, I'm gonna give you a little bit of context, I think. Um, from how this developed and, and why I'm bringing this forward, the impacts. And council, uh, in council session on October twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-five, um, I was asked to bring back two managerial position cuts, in addition to the second IT position. Um, in addition to what it would cost to eliminate the flock to your managerial contract. Keeping in mind that the eight hundred and twenty-five thousand of the two managerial cuts, in addition to the two hundred and twenty-five thousand of those, of the second IT position, which is the tech, uh, the IT technician position. Those are by annual dollars. So I convert that into yearly dollars. So you're looking at um, about just over five hundred thousand, half of one million fifty thousand. The flock camera is hundred and seventy thousand to your contract, which um, does not really move the needle. So, didn't include that. And there's a lot of stipulations on that contract and probably more discussions that had to be made across council by how you wanna proceed. So, to fill that delta, if you're taking five hundred thousand and another million, you're looking at additional positions. And the following three sides, I'll present to you kind of the impact from a service level and what that would be. I think one, one point to make note here also is that um, I do not recommend any of these staffing cuts. What I'm bringing forward to use a scenario based on council direction of what it would be to fill that one point five, five million gap of twenty twenty-six. That delta, that uh, we all know what that deficit is. I think it's actually a little bit higher, about one point six or one point seven million. But we're close enough. It's also important to note that if there was a time that necessitated a reduction in staffing and council gave me direction to move forward and find cuts across the city, I think we need to be really clear about what that means. The investments that were made today, the investments that we made over the past three years are not arbitrary. They are a direct result of addressing the deferred maintenance that we were left holding for many years, after all the years. I believe of why, um, I mean, I have a reason for, I think, I think that's why these, you know, we were left held holding this deferred maintenance. We'll go into that later. The direct result of addressing all this deferred maintenance and the alignment with our twenty forty vision, the one that you adopted at the beginning of this year. Further, I would emphasize that if council did recommend me to come back and make a re- recommendation on staffing, I would maintain the entire PD. And I have various reasons for justifying that. But I believe it's important to address public safety as number priority. I would focus on only those expenditures that support the core services. Um, the same philosophy that I held from the beginning, day one when I started, is making sure that the fundamentals are taking place across the city. And um, making sure that public safety is here, that where the M and O team is taking care of the street sweeping, the um, street striping, um, potholes and so forth. But I think you get it. It's just the core services. I would maintain all internal HR services as well. The employees are the greatest assets we have. And I think it's important to ensure that the well-being of the employees are taken care of regardless of what size you are. I'm not gonna go into, to the risks and the cost savings that we've had so far, but it is paramount, I think, that we take care of the people. That create the successes that we've had so far and will in the future as well. I think IT is critical as well. IT spans the entire city, um, every department, as a redundancy in the backup. We take that for granted and don't realize the support and the uh, the need of that position. Over the past, I think it's about a year since that technician started, he's uh, taking care of, I think, a thousand-plus health tickets. Of course, with PD, about forty-eight percent of our employees, uh, he's supported mostly PD, which is essential to keep those services moving forward. Any downtime in technology would greatly impact the level of service on the PD level, let alone the rest of the city. So, with that, I'll get in these, uh, the impact uh, of, of the one point five million budget cut. One of the biggest areas that would be impacted probably would be on the two of the largest part, uh, projects that we have right now are one that we're starting to commence with the DRCC, which we haven't started, which would probably need to cease immediately. Uh, the second would be South Town Center, which could potentially be halted, but that would be something we could discuss later. But I think that would be on, on the block as well to be um, something that we, we could not support moving forward. It would pause committee and economic development progress, delaying uh, the remaining critical investments that support Mill Creek's uh, twenty forty vision. Uh, community development and code enforcement. We already know how difficult it is to maintain code. Uh, being reactive to everything. And, and in our effort to being proactive in the future, it would just keep us satisfied with the further. We would have reduced capacity to address code enforcement, land use, and development code updates that we have planning, planned for the future. I think it would slow the permitting process slower than it already is. Um, possibly we might have to cut bait on the Open Gov pro- um, project as well, the new permitting process that is gonna replace. What's that? What's that? Oh, my building current, that's right. And so, of course, um, impacting staff on the planning side would, would impact those, those processes. Capital projects, again, focusing on the core, it'd be core CIP projects, uh, things that are fundamentally getting making sure that we're maintaining, you know, are just the basics. Uh, Silvercrest Drive, of course, we have a, a partnership with the county that we're moving forward with, so that would stay. Um, something that could move is a Veterans Monument because that is uh, something that is not core. Um, ARPA funding improvements, AMB improvements and Parks Board initiatives. Anything funded by ARPA could be um, readily, the ones that we committed to could be impacted as well. Um, these are just examples, something, things I've been thinking about. Even the Trillian Project could be one, even though we got, we started a lot of things already. But I think moving forward with some of these would, would, would not be something that I would recommend um, if we had to make those initial cuts, which would be probably lasting throughout two, three, four years until we generate enough revenue to bring the staff back. Next slide. So, public safety. Of course, impacting, it would impact public safety, reducing the our ability to actually address the numerous administrative tasks um, and duties that are required to efficiently manage the staff at twenty-seven. Again, PD is uh, about twenty-nine FTEs. Full FTEs across the city, about sixty-four, sixty-five. So roughly forty-seven, forty-eight percent of our, our staff or, or police. And if there's any department that needs a second command, it's police. It would diminish our capacity to sustain the city's proactive policing. I think there would be a possible impact on the ability and the reaction time to respond to crimes and so forth. I think it's um, could be a reduction in patrol support, community policing and investigations that would possibly lead to slower uh, response time and decreased visibility in neighborhoods as well. With the limited oversight, this would heighten possibly liability exposure or reduce public confidence in safety services that Mill Creek delivers. I talked a little bit about leadership risk and organizational capacity from an HR standpoint. Again, uh, would halt, we would need probably halt. We had experience with Assure um, early on when I got here. Assure was a firm that we outsourced. Um, waste of money of outsourcing. Um, having um, advisement internally um, expertise that's able to not only advise staff on HR related issues, to address things on the fly is so critical in the organization. As is being able to address litigations, um, handle internal processes, work with staffing and so forth. So, these are all really important, not to mention that, that the increase of possible litigation, more investigations and increase in legal expenses that could occur. Something similar to what happened early on when I got here could happen again. So, there would be a reduction in number of, in the scale of city hosted events. There could be a reduction in the number of events that we actually work with partners as well. From the reduction staffing within the Marketing Communications Department. Of course, reducing staff in marketing communication could mean fewer events with less visibility in our asking few residents' businesses and, of course, uh, the city of Mill Creek. Information technology. I've already gave you some ideas about kind of the impact on IT, but won't go into that detail. About the vulnerability, vulnerabilities from cybersecurity or increased risks and kind of things that are important to um, to ensure that our systems up and working. But I will say that um, adding AI, which we've already been talking about, the deputy city manager and the um, IT manager. Uh, we've already talked about creating a foundation for AI and looking and exploring the ways that that technology could be used. Um, but that does take two bodies. While you're fully servicing every single department across the city. Um, these things take time. There are policy implications. And we just wanna make sure that um, we're not increasing risk by not improperly uh, implementing a plan um, that can't be well governed. So, um, it takes capacity to move even into these new initiatives. All the positions that are represented implied here is about one point three, one point two million. Uh, the other three million comes from cutting bait on the GIS and the ASAM admin system. Two systems that my truly feel are important to leverage. Which is again, I think a force multiplier as it relates to bringing efficiencies for longer, investing in the current. Just to be more effective. So, um, with that, I'll take any questions.
Big questions at the end of the staff report. Does it mean, is it, does Armina have more?
Yeah, she does. Um, and so now I'll hand that over to her, Finance Director, please.
Thank you, City Manager Yamamoto. Um, now to review the options, the remaining options uh, for property tax levy. Um, so this um, table shows you the twenty twenty-five uh, tax year uh, as well as option one, which is a one percent increase. A one percent increase will as well as option one, which is a one percent increase. A one percent increase will raise us forty-four thousand approximately. And that's a one percent change on the on the property tax levy. And then option B would be one percent plus one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four would raise a total of two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in new revenue. And that's equal to a five percent increase. And option C is a one percent plus one million, seventy-two thousand, seven hundred, which would give us an additional one million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six and seventy-six cents. And that's equivalent to a twenty-five percent increase. The impacts of these options to our bank capacity are the ones, this row in gold. And so what we decided to do is that to model these options, we are going to present the scenarios to you. Just as a reminder, in twenty twenty-three, when the city annexed is when we backed our bank capacity increased from one hundred, three thousand, two hundred and twenty-two and ninety-six cents to two point five million. And now we have a bank capacity of two million, four hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and forty-eight and eighty-five cents. So the factors for you to consider when setting the levy amount is, as our city manager Yamamoto mentioned, you've established the three to five year strategic priorities for the city. Also, the increasing cost that we have been informing you about specifically the ones relating to the legislative changes, the Supreme Court ruling, insurance costs, inflation, and of course, our revenues are also declining. Our sales tax have begun, is projected to be below prior year, and it'll be flat in the following year. Our state shared revenues have also declined, investment earnings are also declining in ARPA, the one-time revenue was going to be gone. And so as a reminder, we we also modeled the scenarios based off of the priority number three, which is the financial viability that, which is one of your strategic priorities, and you've defined it for us in the short and the long term. And also gave us the guiding principles of you wanted the general fund revenues each year to be greater than the general fund expenditures. And that we should at least have a rainy day fund and that we will not subsidize any not other other funds. And so the financial, again, the financial scenarios we've provided to you is informed by the impact of the new revenue options as well as the the timing of it and how it's going to provide us or result to a better financial or sustainable financial plan for us. And so presented here in this table is the six scenarios. I have option one, I have option A, which is the baseline, and that's just the one percent property tax increase, no utility tax, no TBD. And we will only raise about three hundred and sixty thousand of revenues. Our near term, which is twelve months, that impact of that will be a deficit, the long term will be a deficit. And I'll I'll show you the graph as well as I as I read through this. So this is the million dollar, excuse me, the baseline. And it's, we have a one point seven million dollar in revenue deficit in twenty twenty-six. And in here, it shows you that our our expenditure, which is the red line, will continue to increase at a faster pace than our than our revenue line right here. Option one A is the one percent property tax plus the add-ons. The utility tax of six percent, ATBD of twenty dollars, citywide fee increase, the revised staff cost allocation will generate about one point seven million dollars in new revenue. But at the end of the day, that will still be short, we will be, we will be short by five hundred and seventy-six thousand in twenty twenty-six. But thereafter, our revenues will far, will be outpacing our expenditures in the future. And at the same time, the orange area right here, which is our fund balance, is also increasing. Now scenario two A, which is the scenario for one percent plus the add-ons, no utility tax with a transportation benefit district, a citywide fee increase, revised staff cost allocation and the expenditure cut of one point five million. In the near term, we will be, we will have a revenue surplus of about sixty-seven thousand. But future years, we will continue to be in deficit station, situation. And our fund balance will continue to decline slowly over the years. Scenario B, which is a five percent property tax increase plus the add-ons with a six percent utility tax, a twenty percent TBD. Then a revised cost allocation as well. We will raise approximately one point six million dollars. In the near term, we will still have a revenue deficit of three hundred and ninety-seven thousand. But you can see in here, the revenue is going to be in better shape after twenty twenty-six because it continues to increase thereafter. And in fact, the gap between the revenue and the expenditure actually widens that way, right? So this is more valuable for us. And also you can tell in from the fund balance, which is again, the gold bar, that also continues to rise, which is a good model. Scenario B one, which is a five percent property tax increase plus the add-on, but with only a three percent utility tax. The TBD with the citywide fee increase, we will have in the near term a fund balance deficit of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. And is still a deficit in twenty twenty-seven, and we will be about neutral in twenty-eight, twenty-nine. So this model, we will continue to struggle in the future years as well as in the near term. And this this model will only raise approximately one point two million dollars. And the fund balance from twenty twenty-seven onto twenty twenty-three remains flat. Scenario C is a twenty-five percent property tax increase plus the add-ons, only a three percent utility tax, TBD. Citywide fee will raise about two point one million dollars. And in this, in this model, we will have in the near term, a surplus of sixty-eight thousand dollars. And then in the future, we will continue to have a surplus. But take note of the gap between the revenue and the expenditure because that gap is a little bit narrower. So if we have any revenue shortfall in any of the future year or an unforeseen expenditure spike, then we might end up in the same spot just because that gap is very narrow. Nevertheless, the fund balance continues to grow, but not as fast as the option B. So those are the scenarios and
Amina can ask a clarification. This might be for Grant, just to be clear. Grant, we can't vote on options as packages. We're voting on these individually. We take the property tax first, correct?
No, we're we're going to be taking action on the property tax, and if we need to implement the others, staff wants direction to prepare because we'd have to hold a public hearing next week to implement any of those. So we wouldn't take the direction tonight on a TBD or and or a utility tax would be direction to prepare an ordinance and public hearing for next week.
That that's correct. You, what you're being asked to to decide tonight is what the property tax levy should be. And that's the, and I believe those resolutions, the options are in the packet there, but you're not being asked to adopt a utility tax tonight or a TBD tonight.
Good, thanks.
To give direction.
Correct.
So the scenarios, to clarify, the scenarios are only taking the property tax option in conjunction with all the other revenue options that we have or enhancements that we have so that council will have an informed decision as to what your decision on the property taxes would look like in the current term and in the future in conjunction with your other options. May I continue, Mayor?
Please.
Thank you. So if this, this, this graph shows the city of Mill Creek, city of Mill Creek is the first two, four, seven bars down here. The first one is the the base, the first one is the twenty twenty-five tax revenue per capita. And then the green, the green bars following that are the, would be the Mill Creek if we do the the, all the revenue enhancements as well as the property tax where we're going to end up compared to our peer cities around Mill Creek. And so at the end of the day, we will still hold the second highest from the three options on the on the table right now for property taxes. And even with the other revenue enhancement, the city of Mill Creek is projected to be still the second to Lake Stevens lowest in terms of tax revenue per capita.
I'm sorry, I'm still, no, this is perfect. I just got a little confused by this. Can you? I'm not quite sure I understand this correctly. So the first column.
This first column.
The four hundred and thirty-seven dollars is the per tax?
Tax revenue.
Per capita.
Per one.
Per capita or per nine hundred thousand?
No, per capita.
Per capita. Okay. And and then how is that very, how is that, what is the difference between the first bar and the second bar? I'm sorry.
So the first bar is, this is our twenty twenty-five, based up for our twenty twenty-five tax revenue. If we do the baseline, which is just a one percent and nothing else. And then option A is the, I believe it's the one percent plus a six percent utility tax with the TBD.
Wait, wait a minute. So I'm sorry. So that third one is one percent property tax plus
Utility tax of six percent.
Of six percent. That's the cost increase to the individual would go from four forty-three to four eighty-three?
No, it's not the cost of the individual, but it's the revenue that we're going to
Revenue per capita. Okay. It seems.
No, it's not the revenue per capita, it's the cost, it's the tax burden per capita.
That's what I thought.
Isn't it the tax burden?
That's what I thought. This isn't.
Yeah, yes, because it's the property tax, sales tax and utility taxes that we will raise divided by the population.
Right. So it's it's showing the tax burden per resident, taking if we did a under these various options, what the total taxes would be and dividing it on by the number of residents in the city. To come up with a per capita number to compare the tax burden between cities.
So the property tax is divided by the number of property owners. And the utility tax is divided by the number of homes, correct? Because it's not property owner.
But we're just trying to equalize it, but put it on a per head basis. So it doesn't matter where the revenue comes from. We're collecting all the revenues per city from tag various taxes, utility, property, sales, and then dividing that to come up with a per head number.
All right. So this is a per head property owner only.
No, per head resident. It's divided by twenty-one thousand or twenty-two thousand, nine hundred. What's our popul-
Okay, it's a, it's a quest to give a benchmark that's consistent with every city, the number of citizens.
Yeah, but I first want to understand the number. I, I, yeah, I know there's an idea of benchmark to the other cities, but I want to understand this number because I think I'm sorry, but I think it doesn't make sense. So second column, property owner. That's easy. That's one percent property tax. Right? No. What is the second column?
It's option A one, A two, B, B one and C.
So I thought that a second column was just a one percent property tax. That's one percent plus six percent utility tax?
No, so it's that this, this is
I think we should label these a little differently.
She she did. She labeled them consistent with the chart, which describes the financial scenarios, which is page sixteen of forty-six of the
So in your packets, I have, and I forget the page. So there's, there's this table in the packet. And if you look in column in twenty twenty-six column, I took the property tax, the sales tax. And the, in this one, there's only, so it's just in the property tax, the utility taxes in here and divided that by twenty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty. That's baseline. So it's not just property taxes, but it's total taxes.
So what, I'm sorry, I can't see what page you've got there. You're showing me.
Don't have the page number on this one.
But which graph are we talking about? What's the title at the top?
So to answer your question on what this what this is, what the four four three is, I derived it by taking property taxes, sales tax. But baseline doesn't have utility taxes, so that's zero. And then divided that by two, twenty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty, which is the population of Mill Creek. I get to this number.
You, okay, so now you're saying that first column is property tax and I hear you say sales tax?
Yes, because it's tax revenue, all the tax revenue for the city of Mill Creek less any gambling, but we don't have gambling. So I just have tax options, which is just the sales tax and property tax. And then dividing that by the population.
Okay, so we know what it, what is the, what is the tax revenue per per resident? So you're saying per person?
Four hundred and thirty-four. For the first.
That is your sales tax revenue.
No, that's total revenues less gambling tax.
Okay, so I thought the tax revenue was was higher, sales tax revenue was higher than four hundred and thirty-seven. You're talking about sales tax revenue.
This isn't
I understand. My, okay, so what is, my understanding was the sales tax revenue per citizen.
No.
Per, per, per home, per home was a little over five hundred dollars in per home, correct? This is for, so this is based on a per person, not on a per home basis.
Counsel, may I ask just a clarifying question?
Yeah.
Are you trying to, are you trying to figure out the impact of the three property tax option to a property owner? Or in general?
No, I'm, I'm, I don't think, I don't understand where these numbers come from. So that's what I want to try and focus on. Where does the four hundred and thirty-seven come from? And I heard you say that's the sales tax revenue is one of the areas.
Plus property tax.
And a property tax. And my understanding was
Amina, pull up the graph that you're looking at so everyone can see it.
This one?
No, the one, the chart that shows the revenues that you're using for your calculation, that you were just holding up in your hand.
Oh.
It's by, it's page thirty-one of the PDF that I'm looking at.
It's thirty-one?
The slides aren't numbered. That's why I say it's page thirty-one, thirty-one of forty-six.
No, this is not the one.
It's thirty-one of forty-six. I'm on it now. That's this one. Okay. So trying to find this number that you have per person.
It's not, you're not going to find it on here. You're asking her where she's coming up with her revenue numbers that she used to arrive at that per person number. And this lists the revenue numbers, all that went into that revenue number that she then divided by the population of the city of Mill Creek. To equip, to come up with a number for what that tax, what is revenue to the city is a tax burden to the residents.
All right. So but I'm sorry, I'm being so dumb. Property taxes aren't paid by every individual in the city, right?
You're, you're right, they're not, but it's
So how would I take a property tax and divide it by every citizen? That's where the number doesn't seem to make sense. And neither does the sales tax number per person. I guess it would. If you broke it down and told me what each one was, property tax. Property tax, a one percent property tax is worth forty-four thousand dollars, right? Per home.
Approximately six hundred something.
Yeah, but the part we get.
Oh.
The revenues to the city is forty-four thousand dollars for one percent.
Correct.
That's just the increase. That doesn't count what they're already going to pay. That's just the increase, that doesn't count what they're already gonna pay in property taxes, just the, so you take the forty four thousand and you don't divide it by people, you divide it by homes, I would assume. And you, and it'd be residential, they it'd be, it, right?
That is correct, but I think what we're trying, what I'm trying to demonstrate is compared to other cities. Are, is the city of Mill Creek um relatively, are we a a higher, do we tax um per person a lot higher than other cities? Because um when we provide the services, you're providing services for twenty one thousand population.
Right.
And so what do you use to provide services to twenty one thousand of the population? And we're saying majority of our revenues are generated from sales taxes and property taxes together. They make seventy five percent of general fund money. And so how much money per capita in my, are, is the city raising to provide the core services for the city? Relative to other agencies in the in the county.
That's what you're trying to show here.
That's what we're trying to show, whether are we expen-
Whether it's uh, wh- whether it's really relative or not to individual contribution, that's not the purpose of the chart.
Correct.
So when I, let's just take a look at the increase from a one percent property tax to a one percent property tax and you said six percent?
Um. U- utility?
Utility tax, okay, so could we go back to that, your chart, it started this whole nasty conversation on my part? Now the bar chart.
This one?
Okay, so like on the bar chart, forget, you just wanna show a relationship to other cities, I understand that, so let me just understand that first column is total property taxes, total sales tax divided by all the people, right?
That's twenty twenty five numbers.
So now, the second one, uh which is the Mill Creek baseline, the four four three, that is, that is the
Just the one percent property tax.
In addition to the other. No, it's just, it's just a.
So like, um, so we have the twenty twenty five, I'm just increasing the total of twenty twenty five by one percent, which is just forty four. What does that get us? It's only, it's only a difference of six dollars.
Six dollars. And then A one is, so so that is just a one percent in the second column.
Correct.
Well, it's the one percent plus, it's the other options as well.
No, it's not, no, it's not, it's just the one percent property tax. Is that, we, I heard that it was utility tax and that does not make sense, cause it it went up so little.
Yeah.
The third option, which includes a one percent property tax, correct?
Correct.
And how much utility tax?
Uh, six percent.
Okay, so that's the six percent increase.
Yes.
Alright, so what we're saying is if we just gave them one percent property tax, um the the baseline figured now would be what, would be four four three, but if you added a one percent property tax and a six percent utility tax, the burden to the individual, not home, but the individual, is an increase of forty dollars?
No.
Correct? You're going from four four three to four eighty three?
Yeah.
Yes, that's an increase of forty dollars. So for an increase of forty dollars per person in the city of Mill Creek, we are generating roughly three point four million dollars worth of utility tax revenue?
Approximately, yes, for one year.
For one year?
Correct.
For just a forty dollar increase per person, that's the kind of money we would generate, we're talking about utility taxed people. What kind of a burden are we talking about to our people? Now I'm seeing, now I'm starting to see some light here. You're saying that a a six percent property tax increase is only gonna be an increase per person about forty dollars.
So, well, let me, well, let me qualify the six percent, so the six percent is not fully um realized in twenty twenty six, because you have to, council has to still adopt, to go through the motions of actually adopting the ordinance to impose the six, the the utility tax, so the six percent in in here is only like prorated.
For how long?
For like, I I believe for one quarter.
For one quarter, you're saying we only get one quarter worth of?
If if we, if council decides to take action on utility tax or TBD in in the next few months, then we're assuming we're gonna get only a quarter of the three point four million in twenty twenty six. But thereafter, it's a full.
Alright, so now that makes another one of your charts start to make some sense, cause you said with a one percent property tax and a three percent or six percent utility tax, we still had a gap in twenty twenty six, the reason we have a gap, I guess we're not collecting the utility tax except for one quarter.
Correct, because it does.
Isn't there any way to expedite that any more than one quarter?
Um.
Does it take three, three quarters of a year to get it implemented and done? Yeah, maybe it does.
We 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 don't wanna overpromise, because we don't know, we don't, we don't have direction from council on where.
But if the council gave you direction, how soon could you implement it?
Uh, that I.
Could you implement it in a quarter, in ninety days?
We have.
Do you know?
It'll depend on the business, so we're gonna be.
Depend on utility?
Yes.
Okay, it depends on the utility. Okay, so when we're, when we're looking at this increase, what we need to take into account is a six percent utility tax, the problem is, it's kinda like annexation, we're not gonna get the money for what, you're you're saying for quite a while.
Not for twenty twenty six.
Right, so if we do burden our property owners with a higher property tax uh to make up the gap in twenty six, I'd like to see if I could find a a a better way to achieve that rather than burden, cause once you impose a property tax increase of four percent or five percent or god knows, twenty one percent, it's kinda hard to take it out, so uh that makes it very hard to be a homeowner, even more difficult to be a homeowner in Mill Creek, so I don't, I I I'm I'm, uh that's why I I I I'm trying to understand, these numbers are a little misleading. And I want everyone in council to realize that if we in- initiate a uh a utility tax, we need to find out how soon we can get that money. Cause say in one quarter, that's really underpromising and great, you'll overdeliver probably, but I I think, you know, for us, the al- the alternative is if we look at that, is to maybe do more property tax increase. And that's something, man, gosh, it's, we're we're paying a heck of a lot in property taxes alright, right now. So, and and every, eh every, every percentage we increase doesn't come to us, it's going to a lot of other sources, so we need to take care of the city, and I don't think the property tax is the right way to to do it, I understand the one percent. Um, but uh, and I understand that the 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 uh bank capacity, but all you're really doing is that's not any money in there, but that's that's just the ability to raise taxes even more without a vote and uh property taxes, so I now I'm understanding why these numbers weren't making sense, it's cause you're only taking one quarter of utility tax revenue.
What?
For that first year, whether we do a three percent or a six percent or something, if you do the three percent, you're barely gonna bend the needle at one quarter, three percent utility tax, but the next year would be that much greater.
The um, the other option is, we don't, uh, the if, uh, I think in the graphs that I presented, that if there was any deficit, that we will use the fund balance for the deficit.
I I gathered that, yeah, we go to fund balance, but I'd like to see us a- avoid that too. Sure, we're we're trying to avoid fund balance. Um, I'd like to have a better analysis on the utility tax to make a decision. You know, when when can you get the utility tax revenue in, rather than, well, at least one quarter for sure? That's not a good assumption, cause that's gonna lead us in a different direction. We're gonna vote somewhere else.
I don't think we can promise that, uh, I mean, we could say we might get two quarters, but I because we have no control over it, it, we would just be at the mercy of the different utilities and, you know, your phone company.
Well.
Well, what do these graphs assume for utility tax collection in twenty twenty six? Uh, one quarter.
Three months.
Because what we, we we've heard from other utilities is they would need at least six to to nine months of lead time.
So that's, it's a worst case assumption for twenty twenty.
This is very, very worst case, but have you talked to any of their cities that have implemented utility taxes, see how long it took them to get the utility, so utility's gonna tell you it'll take as long as it can.
Sure, but uh we we tried, so
And they wouldn't tell you?
Pro- it's not that it it's so long ago that they've had it. That the new people that are there might not know um when, you know, what, how they implemented it.
Which is why they did it so long ago.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, but.
Early two thousand, some of them prior to.
So for the pro- I'm sorry, for the property taxes, we have to make a decision to notify the county by end of November for them to implement the property tax following year. Is there a rule of thumb or a set rule for utility tax of when the the utilities have to have have to have notice to implement, so if the council, we're getting far afield, cause this is beyond the property taxes, but we're talking about it. If the council ended up later tonight, authori- giving direction to move forward to the hearing on the utility tax, if we set it at X amount for next year, and then those revenues came in higher than we anticipated, would we be able to change the following year, like we would with property taxes?
Uh, yeah, are you uh?
Say we wanted to do five percent for two thousand six. The end of two thousand twenty six, the council wants to say five percent generated more than we wanted for twenty seven, let's move it to four. Is that something that is?
For property taxes?
No, no, for utility tax, I'm trying to figure out, I know what the process is to change the property tax. Trying to see what, understand what are, what the council's flexibility is on the utility tax.
I will have to defer to ground on that one.
Okay. If you don't know, you don't know. Okay.
Cause I believe uh the ordinance that has been prepared and what the ordinance that I've seen in other agencies is that uh it sets the rate, a specific rate, and then they leave it at that rate. Unless they increase it to the, like the ten percent, in which case they would have to pass a different ordinance, but to actually reduce it, I haven't seen one.
Okay, well, so let's try to get through the presentation, cause I know we have members of the public that have come here to testify. Yeah, well, let's let's try to get through the presentations, we can get to all the questions and get to the testimony. Has everyone read through the presentation? I mean, it was last week, is does anyone have any, maybe let's just jump, are there any further questions?
Well, I I have further questions.
Questions on the presentation, let's let's get.
I have a couple of questions, but is now the actual time to ask the questions or?
Yes, we ask, we ask question, we ask questions now of the staff report, and then once our questions have been answered, then we'll open the public hearing for testimony. Then after that, we'll close it and start entertaining motions and have discussion.
Okay, um, I actually, I have a question. Um, and I apologize, I mean, for not coming to you with this before, cause it just clicked over to me as you were going through them. Um, I had a question between the graph for A two and B one, because if we're if we're looking at the percentage of the property tax, I mean, of the property tax revenue, and I'm assuming that's you know, you may have answered my question with what you were doing with John, um, because I'm getting, I was getting confused on how there was such a big difference between the one, we got the one that's one percent plus a utility tax on A two. And then the B one though seemed to have a bigger deficit, but we did five percent utility tax on that one, and there was only a one percent on the other one, so I don't understand how our deficit's bigger.
The utility tax in B one is three percent, whereas the other one is six percent. Are you comparing it, mayor Potem, between B?
B one.
B one, uh, B one is, the utility tax is three percent.
Three percent, um. Okay, maybe it's.
And a property tax of five, yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I I, okay, I think, cause that's why I wasn't sure why that made sense. Um, then my other question I had was, um, what, what is the re- revised staff cost allocation?
So if we do the TBD, so remember, um, I believe when I was showing the revenue uh revenue review or update, I showed you the graph for streets fund. And I mentioned in that um study session that you're not seeing the full cost of the streets, because this general fund is directly paying for one and a half F P E. And so if we do the TBD, then I think it's like, it should be that we should transfer the cost of those maintenance worker that are working the streets from general fund to streets.
Perfect, thank you, now now I remember, remember that, that's what that meant, so thank you for clarifying that for me.
John, do you have any questions?
No, I do. So now, now I I understand, my first question was to try and understand what, where these numbers came from, so now I understand we're looking at one quarter at six percent, and now you've actually helped me, mayor. If if we wanted to increase that utility tax, let's say uh even higher than six percent for next year, just because we're only gonna get one quarter's worth of revenue, can we then lower it the following year?
No, I believe we.
Just like property tax, you can't go back down?
The, the rate that you set, the utility tax is a set rate, it's not an amount.
No, but if you set it at three percent, six percent or ten percent or twenty percent, can you lower it next year back down from twenty percent to six percent? Can you do that?
So the by, um, R C W authorizes us on some of these, majority of them. We can only, council can impose up to six percent without going to the public for a vote.
Okay.
If you want to increase it above the ten percent, then you have to go to the public for a vote.
So all those other, the the six percent is just the average, uh, that people have been charging in the other cities, I thought. I didn't know that that was the maximum that you can go without a vote.
So they don't go like one.
The ones that are going ten percent or fifteen percent utility taxes, they had to go to a vote to get those?
So the only one that I know, based off of my research, that has gone beyond the ten percent, is Mount Lake Terrace.
Who's gone along with six percent, though, that that, all of those had to be voted?
No, I believe all of the majority, except for one, um, I believe majority of them are at six percent.
How could that be your average then? Cause some are lower and some, some are are higher, so you're saying it's, Ma- Mount Lake Terrace is the only one above six percent?
Mount Lake Terrace is charging ten percent for their water, and then all the other utilities is is at six.
And none of the other ones are above six, none of the other state states, I thought there were some other ones above. I, but I, you probably know better than I do, never mind, I just seemed to remembered it on my, I thought it was higher than that with a number of other cities, and that's why the six percent made sense as the average.
No, statutorily, we can.
So it's not just the average, it's the, it's the only amount you can go um without a vote, so.
You could theoretically just back to the original question, if if we went to six, we could go down to.
Yes, I I I would think so, cause the, you know, the law allows you to do.
You can do that, cause we can't do that with property taxes.
Yes, we do, we do it every year.
We can lower the property taxes, sure.
We did it when we did the annexation.
Because it's budget based.
Yeah, how many times we done it?
We've done it once.
When? Not that I recall.
We did it with the fire annexation.
Oh, the fire.
The fire one, yeah, okay, well, okay, it's not a, alright. But then we gave them that same cost back to the citizen, or another cost back to the citizen.
That's how we gave it back to them.
Yeah, so uh I'm I'm trying to avoid if we did an increase in property tax this next year, it's not going away.
No.
Yeah, so it's, that's just, okay, to me, that's not an option, okay, it's an opinion, not a question. Done.
Any other questions?
So, just to be um fair with time here, I'll hold all my questions to my comment period.
Oh, we're not gonna, we're gonna have a comment period on motions, we're not just gonna have a general discussion, we're gonna put motions on the table and have the discussion in that context, so, okay, any, no questions? Okay, if we have no further questions, do I have a, now have a motion and a second to open the public hearing?
Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Alls in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, I'm gonna begin with those in chambers who signed up in the sign in sheet, there is three, although Mr. Wright, I think inadvertently signed up for the public hearing on the um taxes when he signed up to testify about Veterans Day, so first on the list is Tannis Goldbieski. Three minutes, please, with your comments. Is that on?
Thank you. I just wanted to first say thank you to um finance director for putting in the bars uh representing the other cities compared to the different options in Mill Creek, I think that makes it really visual to see that even as we increase the tax burden, we're not going above our neighbors. Um, I also wanna say that I cannot support one point five million dollars in cuts and cutting everything and all of the progress that you've made and all of the priorities that you set together at the beginning of the year. I'm inclined to support option B one until I hear other options or other thoughts, um primarily because I think any of the charts that show the reserve growing dramatically, I think that's a lot to ask residents, to say we're gonna impose new taxes and we're gonna build our reserves with your money. If there's not a really clear reason to build that reserve, I like the one that the reserve stays even better. Um, so those are my initial thoughts, and I look forward to hearing yours, thank you.
Thank you, Tannis, Barb is the next on the sign in sheet.
Thank you, mayor. My first reaction to reading over the new options was anger, disbelief, and fear. The added scenarios one A and one and two A, A one and A two, are detrimental to our city as we know it. As is shown on the comparative staffing levels of surrounding agencies, we are well below surrounding. As is shown on the comparative staffing levels of surrounding agencies, we are well below surrounding cities. We are already asking staff to multitask. If either of these scenarios is chosen, we may lose more staff than just revising staff allocation. Not acceptable. The one point five million expenditure cuts are dangerous for our survival as a thriving city. There are several suggestions made on the impacts cuts, which were so harmful. A couple of specific ones, reduce public safety service. Suspension of the emergency management program. Risk of increased legal expenses, expenses. I could go into more detail why they are. But hopefully you know for yourselves. Still fluctuating from option B and possibly B one, but not sure. Not A one, not A two, not C. Not that I'm in favor of higher taxes and additional fees, but we need to look to our future as a financial stable city, which means we need more revenue. Thank you.
That is the end of the sign up sheet. Is there anyone in chambers that did not sign up that would like to provide testimony in the public hearing on the property taxes? Not seeing any. Is there anyone online that would like to provide comment in the public hearing going once? Twice, I'm not sure if I see any members of the public on the line. Um, okay. The script says I close the public hearing. Do we have to close it with a motion?
Don't move.
Motion to close the public hearing. Yeah, I hear, heard a motion from Councilmember Cavalieri and a second from Councilmember Paddock. Alls in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? And with that, we close the public hearing at eight twelve. Um, before we move on, can we have a motion to extend the regular meeting to nine thirty, please?
So moved.
Second.
Alls in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. I don't know what the good way is to go about this. I mean, remember, the motions that are being presented now are motions for the property tax levy for two thousand twenty-six. Um, so with that, I know last week I missed the discussion. Um, it looks like you guys winnowed out some options at the beginning. I don't know if you there wanna be motions to eliminate options, or if someone wants to put a motion for an option on the table. So I imagine whatever motion is thrown on the table is gonna generate the discussion.
Mayor, last week, I think we eliminated what we called the low hanging fruit. Options D and E, I believe, so I say we move forward with the current presentation.
Well, no, that's what I'm asking. Of the current options, there are six that I think before us, well, there's, I mean, where is that chart? Where's my?
One's the baseline.
Yeah, correct. There's five options. So our options are, well, let's rule this out. Option A one would be a no, the baseline would be just keep, is there any, does, is there any desire to have a zero percent increase in the property taxes for two thousand twenty-six? Can we rule that one out?
A zero.
Zero percent, no increase. We all, should we have a vote to formalize that? Alls in favor of n- not moving forward with the zero percent increase in two thousand twenty-six? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I voted aye as well. Okay, is there a motion? I, I think the easiest way might just um, be to work up. Is there a motion to do? Okay. I can't make motions and that's the one I wanted to speak to. So I'd ask that that not be ruled out until we have a discussion on one of the other options. Not that there sounds like there may be support for it, but I'd like to at least have that discussion.
Agreed, and, and may, maybe we, do we actually need a motion to discuss um, the rationale behind what some of us, I know Councilmember Steckler and myself added two uh addendums to the, what the city staff had proposed. Um, you weren't here last week and neither were a lot of the public. I'd certainly like to be heard on it.
Well, well, but we need a motion on a property tax levy amount, not an option on a property tax levy amount. If you want to, in context of that, argue why you're supporting X percent increase because of other considerations that we're not voting on yet, that's fair game, but we have to be a motion on a property tax. So the next would be that's on the option table is a one percent increase in the property tax for two thousand twenty-six.
Mayor, the, the problem with just voting on one percent by itself is you, you need to take into context if you're gonna do.
We don't have that luxury. I understand.
I'll move, I'll move to, um, oh, what's the actual motion I need? Move to adopt the ordinance authorizing, um, option B. So what is?
Yeah, he's, he's, what he's saying is we can't.
No, we can do. Yeah, for a five percent property tax increase, whatever that dollar amount works out to.
Okay, um, so move to um, adopt the ordinance authorizing levy to be collected in two thousand twenty-six tax year. The dollar amount of increase over the actual levy amount from previous years shall be two hundred and twenty-three thousand, which is a percentage increase of five percent from previous year.
Two hundred and twenty-three thousand and seventy-six cents, technically.
A second for discussion.
Open for discussion?
Is open for discussion. Now, what I'd like to do is try to go, we can do it. I wanna give everyone a chance to say piece once and then we'll give us, everyone a chance to say something twice. Otherwise, we're gonna be here possibly forever. And I know there's people anxious to.
I think it's really good to let everybody speak the piece, Mayor. So this is a very important piece, so. Yeah, let everybody speak to, to the extent that they, they wish. A five percent property tax.
I think we, does the maker, does the maker of the motion would like to speak to their motion first? That's the Roberts rules, I'm.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, right.
It is.
Yeah, right.
Um, okay, um, Mayor, um, one, somebody needs to throw something out here to have a discussion. But two, um, the reason why I think we should discuss, um, option B one um, is cause I have a couple reasons here, so, um, one is that I'm looking at the difference between, um, how a regressive tax being the property tax, how that affects our residents and it affects everybody, um, regardless of income. So everyone is paying the same amount regardless of how much they make. So it is disproportionately affects um, people who make less money. Um, the five percent of the actual property tax actually keeps us in line because we actually dropped in value by five percent. And I know this gets really confusing. So it's, gets complicated to understand. So by doing the five percent is keeping us fairly even there, but getting us some, getting five percent and then, um, so also when I'm looking at this option, I'm not really wanting the, um, reserves to grow exponentially as we go out. And some of these options actually start to grow the reserve fund quite a bit. And I'm not comfortable raising taxes to go and start putting into the reserve fund, um, as we go out. So I would like to not raise to amount of that. Um, so I put those in there and, um, that's my main reason. So, um, and I do wanna add in here that we do still need to look for cost efficiencies in the future and that would keep us in line with being able to do that, cause I feel like if we jump too high, we could be, um, we could be tempted to just spend. Um, and that we need to, um, as a council, I just wanna, to put here too, that we also need to maybe adjust our priorities as we move forward and consider the impact of costs, um, on our priorities. So that is what I have. Um, that's all, I think, for now. For the motion.
Is the, who seconded the motion? Mayor, or Councilmember D K?
Thank you very much. Um, I obviously seconded so that we could have a discussion to start off things. I wanna focus that I am not, um, in my comments, not talking about any of the additional things that we do, we do need to look at as the mayor has shared, um, for next week of the direction that we need to go into. So in terms of what utility tax or transportation, I'm just focused on, on that initial number. And if it's okay, if we can put on the, um, on the big screen, I'm looking at the slide that has the two thousand twenty-six levy amount options. So, um, in my pack, I, in my packet's eleven, but, um, it's right after your one point five, like the cut, so it's towards the beginning. Yeah, so yeah, that one. So if you, if you look at that one on your screen, this is the, I'm, I'm focusing now on the, um, like the, the change amount that we keep talking about for residents, right? And so again, option B and option C, never mind B one or C or any of like the subcategories, cause that only impacts the other things we're gonna talk about. Right now, we're just talking about the big numbers at the top. And so i- it's, um, I feel like that's why I'm going towards option B for, for that amount. But also based off of the graphs and the information Armina has, when we've met, um, at our own individual time, but over these meetings, it seems like option B, uh, so this one percent, um, plus the, um, uh, the, the bank capacity, um, seems to, to make the most sense and happy to, not happy. Never happy, as I was told by my husband what I was coming in to do tonight. But, um, but, uh, it seems to make the most sense for longevity for what we're trying to do as a city cause I don't want us to go back to more of the deferred maintenance. I mean, just today, as I was going around the city, I took photos of the Mill Creek Library parking lot and curb things that need to be fixed and, you know, just walking to the, to two of the neighborhood parks and seeing sidewalks and roads and things that, you know, they were, we're still catching up. And so there's no opportunity right now for us to go back because we're still, we're not delivering, uh, we're delivering with a smile, but we're not delivering the level that we're, I believe we expect maintenance is. Um, and not to any fault of city staff, but more the resources that we've put into this historically. So, um, that's why, um, the, the, um, uh, motion currently, um, I'm supportive of.
Councilmember Allison.
Yeah, this is the slide that I wanna focus on. So five percent sounds really bad, but the rate for option B is actually not going up from where we are now. So I can get behind this one. It's not driving the property taxes higher. The rate is remaining the same. Even though it's a scary amount, five percent, it sounds horrible. But because of the property values and the adjustments accordingly, it works out to the same rate.
Councilmember Steckler.
This, uh, first question I have, option B says one percent plus the bank capacity. So the levy amount of point six eight, eight six is the one percent uh, allocation of, of property tax increase on the resident. It does not include the bank capacity.
It does.
How can it? You're adding four, four percent more. How can it not go up?
So the, oh.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. I'd like to ask that question right, right away, cause Councilmember, uh, Allison bought this chart up.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Okay, um, so the two thousand twenty-five levy amount is this four point four million, yes? And this two hundred and twenty-three is the combination of the forty-four thou, forty-four hun, thousand, which is the one percent, plus the one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, which is equal to the two-two-three. So the total levy amount will now be four point six million dollars, this one right here.
Okay, but the two-two-three is the bank capacity, correct?
The two-two, no, the two-two-three is a combination of the one percent plus one hundred and seventy-eight of the bank capacity.
That bank capacity. So what you've done is you're adding more taxes in the two-two-three, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
That's right.
If you're thinking that the, the individual, uh, tax holder is paying the exact same, they're not. They're gonna pay the additional two-two-three in addition to the point six eight six.
Yes.
Yes, so it's not the same. That's very, that's very misleading.
But then levy, I believe, um, Councilmember Allison was just saying that so the rate that's gonna be applied to the property owners will be based off of the rate, which is the, the, the four point six million, which is the property tax amount, divided by the citywide assessed value to get to this point six eight eight six levy rate that's going to then be applied to the property owner's home value per thousand.
Where do we get to two hundred and twenty-three thousand? Where does that money come from?
The one percent from that, uh, one percent of four million, four hundred twenty-three thousand, six hundred seventy-six and forty-two cents plus the hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred sixty-four in adjustment we get for increased construction.
No, no, I'm sorry. I thought that was bank capacity.
Oh, that's, yeah, the bank, I'm sorry.
Bank capacity is property tax increases.
Yes.
Understand that?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so you're not paying the same. The levy rate is the same, but that's because you're, you're, you're taking out the bank capacity from it. In addition to that levy rate, you will pay additional taxes to, to generate the, um, bank capacity, correct?
Thirty-one dollars.
Thirty-one dollars.
Thirty-one dollars on a house of nine hundred thousand.
The, the numerator's changing, right? It's going from six.
Yeah, going from six to eight.
To six eight.
Or six seven. Yeah.
When you apply that same number to a higher number, it gives you a larger dollar amount, but keeps this number the same.
But if I'm applying this to this number, how come I only get, um, I only get six point four? This six point seven isn't gonna be enough to generate the additional hundred seventy-eight thousand, is it? See.
Use your little calculator.
Yeah, I, I, okay, so it, what I'm, what I'm trying to avoid is moving the, uh, bank capacity under a, a, a different bucket that the property owner doesn't feel that they're going to be hit for it, because they are. They are gonna pay for that, okay. They're gonna pay for that bank capacity. So the reason I don't like Bs is, the, the option Bs, is because they do include bank capacity. And the, the, um, they're gonna have to. So wh- what, I think thi- this is kind of confusing and I heard some of the comments from the public. There's only one option here that included that one point five million dollar cut, as I could see here. And all of the threatening, it's gonna close down every department in the city is gonna have to pay for it. I, I still don't quite understand how every department gets shut down if you're gonna decrease some staff. But I don't wanna get into that, cause I'm not even into staff cuts. I don't, but there's only one option, option two A, which includes the one point five million. According to this chart, attachment two, I don't have a page number. Um, but that's the only one that has the one point five million. All the other options you, you, you saw up here have the revised staff allocation allocated. Correct? Pardon me? It's the only one I see in this chart. That says.
Mr. Steckler, are you looking at the financial scenario or the? Levy amount?
Financial scenarios. The only one is option two A that I see says expenditure cut one point five. Okay, so that's the only one that has the one point five million.
Correct.
All right, so it's not, what I heard from the public was, we don't like option A because they include, you know, huge, huge, uh, staff cuts. There's only one that includes huge staff cuts. So going back to the, uh, motion of a five percent property tax increase, which is option B one. The reason I am not sup.
It's B and B one.
B and B one, both include a five percent property tax increase.
Correct, but the motion for is, is, is only the five percent increase.
Yeah, okay, five percent tax increase. The reason why I don't support a five percent property tax increase is because we don't need to put that burden on our property owners in order to hit our numbers. We look at A one, which had a one percent property tax. One percent, we get there with one percent property tax, with utility tax, without, uh, without having to go to bank capacity. Um, there are ways to get there. So the five percent is an extreme we don't need to go to. And if we go to a five percent, we can't come back. So I, I, I'm strongly supporting that we only consider a one percent property tax increase. Uh, cause if you look here, the, the, um, the utility taxes on, uh, 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 on Bs are, you know, either from three to six and I don't really understand the, the deficit on this. Um, so anyway, I think the utility, utility taxes and the one percent get us to where we need to be. Plus, I know it's a little bit over the expenditures, but looking down the road four or five years, I'd rather be a little bit over our expenditures, rather than saying we're gonna be right at the expenditures, cause you know what happens? Prices go up. So those expenditure lines, you know, that, don't, don't, that's, you're fraught with having this same little dance two or three years, uh, uh, down the road for us again. So I don't wanna go there. I wanna go with the one percent property tax, protect our property owners who, you know, you talk about nine hundred thousand all you want, but that's, that's a fixer upper in Mill Creek now. The property, uh, uh, costs for homes are in the million and a half plus. So i- it's, you know, it's gonna be a lot more burden on a, a property owner. They'll just keep throwing around one percent, two percent or five percent. Don't just keep throwing around one percent, two percent, or five percent. I'd say we go with one percent, no more than that, and we focus on the other alternatives like utility taxes. They don't include a one point five million dollar cut of every single department we have, so don't don't be afraid of that. There are other ways for us to get here, uh rather than a five percent property tax, and we cannot go back, so I would not support that.
Councilmember Cavallari.
I think councilmember Paddock was next. Go ahead.
You are next. I'm keeping track.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to say, it's, it can be both frustrating and uncomfortable up here at times. And I want staff to know that looking across the table from the dais here and asking that maybe probably no one in this room, but that some might need to be taken from the employment ranks is a realistic um conversation that we should have. Our forecast model is nothing new. It's the same as it was last year, same as it was the year before. And they all run massive deficits if you don't adjust spending. Last week, myself and councilmember Stickle uh asked for some alternatives, which are A one and A two. And and none of them are perfect. But what they do is they lessen the burden on the property tax owner. But when we talk about A two, we're met with this long list of doomsday predictions and potential impacts of which I have here, and I'll go into further detail, but the positions mentioned have nothing to do with strategic priorities, long-term projects, development and whatnot. So not even going to get into that right now, but the point I'm trying to make is that the council or this council member and staff, who I think were on two different planes. Last week, I highlighted the three-year strategic plan. And uh one of the three bullets was fiscal responsibility. And perhaps we're just juggling too many balls in the air, like I've said before. I've said it numerous times. But plans change. We have to sometimes pivot. We have to adjust because economies change. Nothing is written in stone about the priorities. This has been used, for the most part, as a bludgeoning tool for taxation, in my opinion. So instead of reevaluating the priorities, we've doubled down effectively on just maintaining status quo. We'll figure out a way to tax and spend for it later. When the chart that the city finance manager provided on A two after this year keeps us along parallel lines all the way through twenty thirty. That allows you an opportunity to pivot and readjust. The posture must change. It can't be all or nothing. I would never support any tax increase if it did involve any sort of cuts at this point. I think it's unreasonable. Cities around us have maxed out their property taxes. They've maxed out their utility taxes, and they've capped their bank capacity. And they still run in the red, some of them in the tens of millions. It's this kind of Ponzi scheme where you keep adding to the status quo, adding more taxes, inflation, more taxes, a- and on and on we go. So then you have to factor in the decline in sales tax. How do we not make spending a priority at this point? Just offering taxation as a remedy is is for the most part, it's un- it's an unreasonable ask, in my opinion. This puts us on the same trajectory as every other city that I've mentioned earlier uh that are failing financially and running massive deficits. I asked the city manager to choose the positions, but judging from tonight's presentation, I'd say the heels are dug in. It's it's take it or leave it. Shooting down every alternative with what I would call scare tactics, threats to this policy, threats to that project, deferred maintenance, crumbling infrastructure. And I've heard this many times before, sitting up here ten plus years. A two puts us on a proper track without impacting the tax member massively, the taxpayer. There are other components to it, which is why I would recommend the one percent, which which will wa- is what A two does, but coupled with the new fee schedule, coupled with the transport, transportation benefit uh district or tax, or whatever we're calling it, that puts us in a position for success. And if the market dictates a year from now that we can bring these positions back or two, then that's what we do. I would even be open to some sort of utility taxes if council members were willing to put it to a vote to the people. You want to make the case that that everything is is so bad and and we're falling behind and we have to keep every personnel here? Um, all right, well, let's make that case. Let's bring it to the ballot this April. We'll have a special election. Simply deferring to current recommendations, to me, it's irresponsible, because the city staff does not answer to the taxpayers, the seven of us up here do. Thank you.
Councilmember Paddock.
So um would you mind pulling up the tax revenue less gambling per capita? Just so we have that as a reference point. So from from my perspective, I I um it seems like B and C are the two um options that keep us in the green. You don't need to go back to the other other slides, but those are the two that keep us in in the green. And of the two, B seems to be the one that keeps the property tax levy rate the same and keeps us just above water. Whereas C, I feel like maybe gets us a little too high on that uh that water. Um and you know, in in these times uh where it's a it's a little bit tougher for folks, um that seems like a stretch. As far as demonstrating um fiscal responsibility, I I hate to to go back to last budget. But the last budget, we used half a million dollars of savings from R P B to plug the hole for twenty five. And we used our savings from prior tax lo- uh prior tax years of one point four million dollars to fill the hole. And just about everybody, including the folks that have spoken here, voted for that. Um, that doesn't feel responsible. And if you look at this particular chart, I think it demonstrates that C, excuse me, B in both for both uh both uh capacities, B and B one, keep us significantly below all the peers that have just been mentioned. And I I don't know what better benchmark we could use than looking at what these other folks are doing. So if if we're not fiscally responsible, being underwater compared to these folks, I I mean, I don't know how else to demonstrate to the community that we're being fiscally responsible. Unfortunately, we we're only voting right now on the property tax, which I think the bundles make more sense and would make more sense to the community as a whole, rather than looking at one at each one of these on its own. But as as the prior council member just uh just mentioned, I do think that there is room to look at the spending. I don't think it's all or none. I I'll I'll be frank, I I think the decimal point is in the wrong place at a one point five million dollar cut. But that doesn't mean that that decimal point couldn't be moved. And um and I think having a balanced look of increased revenue, along with some um measured look at where spending could be cut, and I'm not talking about specific programs, but a percentage. I I think that the community would appreciate the give and take of that discussion and an outcome that included both.
I have a few thoughts. I'm frankly a little bit disappointed in the discussion I'm hearing. And it's because, you know, we've talked a lot about how we've evolved and are evolving from a glorified HOA into an actual city. Um and we've spent the last five years trying to make that happen. We spent a significant amount of time and money in a strategic plan to point a vision forward. And I said when we adopted it, and I remember Barb laughing when I held this up and shook it, is every decision I'm going to make, and I'm going to be looking at this. And if you look at this, develop a long-term plan, uh develop a plan for financial viability for a city, short and long term. There's only one graph that's before us that addresses both of those. That's option C, the property tax increase of twenty five percent. That's the only one. Now, I agree that that might be a bridge too far. I wouldn't support it. I don't want to just grow the grow the um br- general fund reserve. I would want us to adopt some kind of policy that puts constraints, guides the council in future years as to a floor and a cap. But I see that there's no appetite to go there. I support B, I would support B as a fallback, but not B one. My concern with B, B one is, again, looking at the graph, that's just kicking this problem down the road. The whole point of the strategic plan is to come up a way for a long-term plan. And what I hear being discussed up here is a short-term plan to get us down the road another two years. That's not a long-term plan for fi- financial viability. Option B, not B one, but option B gets us closer to that because it has a long-term benefit. In the short term, you shoot yourselves in the foot next year, because you're taking away six hundred some thousand dollars from the general fund that you're losing for opportunities for a public works facility. If you annex, you're going to have increased costs that are going to hit pretty quickly. You take away a lot of flexibility, and you take away the opportunity to respond to the next sinkhole. And I s- say that I'm disappointed a bit, because I mean, the strategic plan was well-received by the community. We didn't hear a lot of people saying, no, you're giving the wrong direction. That's not where we want our city to go. And I don't think our strategic plan was, we're going to do this, but only if we can do it with a one percent increase and minimal talk to property tax or uh tax increases. Remember, getting to councilmember Cavallari's point, the the I don't view this as a bludgeon for taxation. The strategic plan was to get us to other points in time where we have other revenue sources, so we're not having these discussions. It's getting us to a bridge to annexation, and that's where you choose to go. It's getting us to the bridge of development of the sub area where through economic development or and or annexation, we're developing those additional remit uh revenues. So you all aren't having these discussions of should I raise property taxes? Should I raise utility taxes? But we can't get there on a bootstrap. And so, you know, it's for tho- uh, we haven't heard anyone saying, don't cut our services. I haven't heard a single person in the testimony. What I heard, and I think Mayor Protem heard at the city chats, is keep it up. We want the same level of service. We want better. We want the roads cleaned promptly after storms. We want the grass cut in the parks. We want the roads fixed. We want code enforcement. And we don't have the resources to do it, and cutting isn't going to get us there. I don't, I think we have a very responsible council and very responsible staff that keeps their eye on the ball. And I'm a little bit bothered when they hear this notion, we need to send it back and think about sending back and cut more. That assumes that the people in front of us haven't done everything they can to bring us what they think is the most fiscally responsible budget that implements the priorities that we set for them. So, you know, I I I again, I'm going to close by saying I'm disappointed, because I I hear people abandoning the strategic vision for the the strategic plan. Because the the discussion I'm hearing doesn't get us there. It gets you a a Band-Aid through the next biennium. I mean, B one doesn't even get you to twenty seven before you're having the same discussion, having the very same discussion as does A two. If you just cut, you're at the same point two years from now, having the same discussion. So I'm only going to support an option that gets us to a long-term financial stability. My preference would be to consider alternative C, option C, with some understanding that there'd be a fiscal or financial policy that puts some limits on how much that reserve could grow, so we're not just collecting money for, because they could collecting money. Um but I will support B, but I'm not going to support the B one options that come with it. So with that, I think councilmember Allison had her light on next.
Thank you. I I just wanted to add that I think there's a lot of value in retaining our bank capacity as much as we possibly can. We're looking at developing in the future. It's it's collateral. It's it it will help us. So that's why I can't support anything other than B. Um, I C is just a bridge too far. It's way too much bank capacity being utilized all at the same time. Twenty five percent is crazy in property tax increase in one year. So that's where I settled in on B. I think that there's always room to cut something somewhere in every organization. You know, we've, we all have to make decisions at home every day, you know? What streaming service don't don't I need this month, right? I mean, there's always room to cut something, and that's that's a healthy thing to do on a regular basis, you know? What do you really need? So I, you know, I understand the staff right now for the vision that's been put forward, that's locked in from your perspective, but there's probably another way to handle some of the functions in a a more fiscally conservative manner. Just going to put that out there. I could think of a few things that I would do if I were in your shoes, Martin. So I just wanted to get that off my chest. Thanks.
I believe it's councilmember Stickle, and then Cavallari, then Paddock.
Same order. Yeah, I like it. I just wanted to make sure I'm reading these two charts correctly. Specifically, I'm talking about B and and um and A. Wish they were and A one. Yes, the only difference between B and A one is that B has a, they both are have a shortfall in twenty six and then provide additional income over expenses after that. But they both have a small shortfall in twenty six. But B has a five percent property tax increase and A one has a one percent property tax increase. So make sure everybody everybody sees that, that the only difference here is that four percent property tax increase, which really we, in both cases, we're still going to have that little shortfall either way. So if we go with A one, which only has a one percent property tax, both have the six percent utility tax. And again, the staff has said, we took the worst-case scenario on the utility tax at one quarter. It could be a better number than that, which in in turn would make the gap that we have right there. So it, like I say, again, going from a one percent property tax to a five percent property tax is, it's going to be tough on people. And and I and if it's not critically necessary, I I think we can do it with A one. They're both about the same. They both have a shortfall, and we could make that shortfall up. We could make it up in a number of different ways. If it's a hundred thousand dollars difference, which is what it it says here in revenue, minus one point five versus minus one point six. So what's the difference? A hundred thousand dollars? That's a lot different than cutting one point five million dollars. I think it's a hundred thousand dollars we could find to cut in expenses, but even if we didn't want to do that, there's still the chance we can get the property, the utility tax revenues coming in for the last six months. Boom, we make it. Uh it's not necessary to go to a five percent property tax, and A one shows us we don't need to. A one shows we can do it with a one percent and get the same results.
Councilmember Cavallari.
Thanks, Marinate. And I think I've really, for the most part, said all I need to say uh regarding my position. Two things, um I want to really thank every council member up here. I've listened to some other councils recently and uh their lack of decorum and and respect for one another and the willingness to debate one another uh in a civil manner is um is something that they don't, they don't hold near and dear like we do. So I really appreciate this, this and and friends in the public, this is how it is supposed to be. We're supposed to, not everybody's supposed to be of the same opinion. We're not all supposed to think the same way. It's it's the it's the hodgepodge of all of that that brings us to the middle. We're some sort of common ground in, and uh and to me, that's where the beauty's made. The last thing I will say regarding uh no, option B is. is that option B with the 5% plus the 1%, so 6% property tax increase is simple.
No, 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 no. It's 5-2.
Okay, all right. So the 5% is merely an opener. It, it's just one of the levers we're passing now because there's going to be other taxation coming. And I want people to be aware of that, that there's other things coming down the pike. Probably utility taxes incorporated with this, the transportation benefit tax, the, the, the fees and adjustments and, and lost for words right now. But those things are all coming. So the 5%, it's not just, it's not just the one-off. It's, there's, there's several other pieces coming down the pike. That's, that's why I won't support B. Thank you.
Councilmember Paddock.
I guess one thing I just wanted to follow on to something that was brought up earlier about long-term planning. You know, there's, there's two ways to execute long-term plans. I think there's a couple of us that have had some, let's say, corporate experience with those two versions. One is the big bang, come in, do something huge, get that huge project done, and that's your long-term execution. The other way is to do things in pieces and little bites, iterate. Move forward, assess the efficacy, make a decision, move forward, assess the efficacy, iterate. And I, in my opinion, B is the iterative path rather than the, the big bang. And it gives us an opportunity, and frankly, it gives the community and it gives the staff an opportunity to iterate on what we learned from having that additional investment from the community, whichever of the options and components that are part of B, rather than taking the big bang and maybe potentially finding out that we were wrong. On either side of that spectrum, by the way, big bang A, big bang C. And which is why, to me, B is, is the, the nice comfortable middle of being able to iterate on something and learn from, from facts and data rather than hopes and dreams.
Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to circle back now that everybody's been having some discussions. And first, I will, I want to point out what Councilmember Cavallari said, that it is really nice that we, I've been really watching some other councils and their races and things lately. And we do such a good job of being cordial to each other and being respectful, and I greatly appreciate that. I wanted to point out a few things. When I'm looking at, in the, in the 5%, it's not, sometimes it makes me happy. I don't like to raise anything. But I want to point out a few things when we're talking about this. Because, one, when we're looking at our budget, for starters, we, we did not, we gave back more than we should have with the bank capacity in the, I mean, with the, with the annexation that's in our bank custody. Because for one thing, we have like $44,000 a year that is, is the payback on the loan for the fire station that needs to be handled. And I think we should have kept that out to begin with. And so that's something that is not, we can't make that go away. Two, when we're looking at the, these fees or the reason why things are going up, it's things we can't control. The insurance costs are going through the roof. Our jail costs are going through the roof. The inju, inju, I can't even pronounce right. The fence is going through the roof. So, and then our failing infrastructure is catching up with us. We have been fiscally responsible for a long time, and we're 40 years old now, and things are breaking. And the pipes are breaking, the roads need repaired, the parks need more trimming. You know, the trees are growing up through the sidewalks. There's so many things that are coming up that we have to take care of. So when I'm talking to people, they keep telling me that they want us to take care of these things. So when I'm looking at spending an extra $30 a year to go and make sure that I'm getting those things, I, I think it, it's something that's extremely important because we need to be taking care of the city and fixing all these things that are breaking and we need to have taken care of so that we can continue to be proud of our city. And I think the residents want us to take care of those things. And that's what we keep hearing. And we keep hearing that we need someone to handle the code enforcement. So residents are telling us that they want us to be doing more things. And so for me, this, this, like Councilmember Paddock said, this isn't like the big bang, everything at once. This is a step to start to get us towards where we need to be. So that's my thoughts on that.
I think I had two or three just final points. One is just a little context. I mean, I, I agree. And like I said in my earlier comments, we need to be fiscally responsible, and I think we have been. But you need to be careful when you cross the line from being fiscally responsible to being a miser. And one of the things we've worked on hard over the last decade is the culture within the city. And that culture, when I came on council, was horrible because the staff had a complete utter distrust of the council and the decisions that this body was making at the time. Because they viewed us as simply not caring about the city or the staff. We only cared about the bottom line. And so that's my concern about all this talk with cuts. We need to be careful of all the undoing, a lot of the positive that we've developed and worked hard to develop on the culture over the last five to 10 years, that we don't undo it. And then we see an exodus of people that want to leave because they don't see a future here, they just see cuts. I, the last point might be a little long, but, you know, I'm not advocating for anything that I'm not willing to tax, to pay as a taxpayer. I mean, I'm a taxpayer too, as we all are, I think. And someone made the comment, we, we can't be tough on the property owners. Come on, we're talking about 30 bucks a year. 30 bucks. When we raised the surface water fee from 75 bucks to 150 bucks, did we have a single person come in this room and say, what the heck were you doing? Did we have anyone when the fire annexation was raising people's property taxes? We recommend they approve it, which raised it like 300 bucks on average per person? Did anyone come and tell us, don't raise our taxes? Have we had any person come in here and tell us in the two hearings over the last two weeks, don't raise our taxes? I mean, that's why it drives me crazy when I see these percentages because they make good talking points. Let's talk dollars and cents. We're talking 30 bucks to maintain the level of service we have now and to implement the strategic priorities that we've identified. Is it worth it to me as a property owner and taxpayer to pay 30 bucks to maintain that level of service? Heck yes. Councilmember Dekler. And this was, if we open it up to a third bite, we're going to go around the room for, give everyone an opportunity. So I want to not just continue, we've all had a second, well, I think everyone except, you'll pass, okay. So have we said our piece, or do you really need to say something more?
When I look at a property tax increase, first year out, it might be $30 or $60. But I also look at the compounding effect that that can have year after year. Because next year, there's going to be more deck, property tax increases, and the next year, it'll be more and more and more. So, you know, you can look at it in a one-year, you can look at it over the next five or 10 years. I think that's, that's fair. And again, that's per 900,000. For some people, it's going to be a lot more than $30 more a month. It's going to be quite a bit more. Because if you have a four or five million dollar home, or a, let's say, a three million dollar home, that's very realistic in our city. That's going to be a bigger number, and it will compound as the years go on per 900,000 value. I, 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 I wanted to, now, I'm going to, I'm just going to respond to that one comment. That's, you know, I want to talk again when I'm responding to something that was brought up. So I'll just respond to that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were, you're done? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought you were leaving and just going to say something. Okay. If there's no further discussion, the motion on the table is to approve a property tax increase for 2026 of 5%, which is, translates to $223,076. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No, opposed.
Any abstentions? The motion passes 5-2. Did you want us to get to the, before we get, well, first of all, we're going to punt the, I'm sorry, Jeff, we're going to punt the economic development discussion to another night. I'll just, we're not, I'll make that decision. Do you, rather than going on to the other items and coming back to the direction you want on the utility tax? And would you like us to proceed with those discussions?
Council, council direction, and then we can come back with the legislative.
Correct. But before we move on, we still have a PRD code change to deal with. So. I, I would like to stay on topic. If we're going to stay with taxes and talking about the other decisions for the options, why don't we take five minutes? Because I know I need to use the boys' room and take a breather, and then we'll come back and have it just put, well, we'll first do the utility tax and the, no, we're, but we'll do the TBD first, and then we'll talk about utility tax.
Have we already extended?
Yes, we extended it to 9:30 tomorrow.
I hope we can practice. I know, it's true.
You read a good campaign, outdoor billing like crazy.
Swivel. Uh, no, I actually had sour gummies. I put them in my mailbox.
Okay, let's pick up where we left off. We took a brief recess at nine o'clock, and we were reconvening at 9:06. The staff has asked for direction on two potential tax measures, a utility tax and a transportation benefit district. This would not be a discussion of approving either tonight. It'd be giving direction to have a hold of public hearing for us to consider an ordinance next week.
Point, point clarification. We're, we're just yes or no on whether to hold a discussion?
Whether we did, whether, so that, I think the TBD from our early discussion is probably going to be the easiest one. I think I'm, I've heard from our discussion consensus that a $20 transportation benefit district probably makes sense. And so the, if that is the will of the majority, if we have a vote on that, the direction would be not to approve that, would be to direct the staff to prepare an ordinance to that effect and hold a public hearing on that next week. And we would take action to consider that ordinance and vote on it and approve or not approve it next week.
Copy.
So tonight's would just be a direction to prepare an ordinance to possibly consider. So I, for the transportation to benefit district, I mean, is there a motion to put on the table a direction for council staff to prepare an ordinance and notice a public hearing on a $20 transportation benefit district for $20?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, the floor is open for discussion. Sean, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, just thought I'd put it out there.
Mayor Protam, would you like to speak to your motion?
I think we've had all these discussions that aren't here. So the amount of money that we need to fix the roads and repair them that's coming up is quite overwhelming. So the only way we're going to get there to be able to take care of the roads is to do the, what do you call it? The transportation district to help fund those roads. So that's why I made, I seconded the motion.
Councilmember Cavallari.
Thanks, Mayor. One of the only additional taxes that I saw in here that I, I could fully get behind was the transportation benefit district tax. Fact of the matter is, it, it goes towards roads, goes towards infrastructure. And, and we had talked about funding streets, and now, now that opportunity exists. So this is one tax that I will support this evening. Thank you.
Other discussion? I'm sorry, Councilmember House, I was, too many lights on you.
Um, yeah. So I, I know I've stated this before, but we have the highest per capita electric vehicles in the county. And that doesn't help us pull in more gas tax, which is also meant to fund the roads. Electric vehicles are heavy. They take a toll. And this kind of evens everybody out, in my opinion. So I realize the people with gas cars will also be paying it, but what's fair is fair. And right now, our And right now, our roads account is not structurally sound. So that's why I can get behind tha- that particular tax.
Other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes seven zero. You have your direction on a transportation benefit district.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, but I think we need to clarify with the city attorney if, um, that we've, we had enough sufficient time for a public hearing from Tuesday to hear this, um, or to have this. Or were you thinking just to study session first?
Well, I thought that's what I heard earlier, so I, do we need to amend the, go back and amend the, the motion to schedule the ordinance at the earliest possible time? Cause there is not a November deadline for holding a hearing on a TBD. It's just at the soonest possible time so we could implement it for next, as soon as possible. Do we need, the, the city attorney, would you advise we modify something to clarify that direction?
It, it was, I didn't quite hear what, uh, the finance director said, but it seems to me that, oh, you, what you were doing was you were giving direction to, um, pursue formation and, and, and did it include holding a public hearing?
Yes, and I don't think it specifically, I think we, I thought I heard someone say that the hearing could be next week, but I think the intent was just to have the hearing as soon as we could.
Okay, thank you.
Is everyone in agreement with that? I'm seeing a knot of heads up and down. Okay, now, direction on a potential utility tax.
Um, move to have a public hearing on the, starting a utility tax?
Grant, can we?
How do we need to do?
Can we approve a motion? Does it have to be a specific percentage or can it be a motion to approve a utility tax not to exceed six percent?
The, the, the direction, yeah, you don't need, first you don't need a public hearing. Um, you can have one if you want. Um, secondly, um, it would be, uh, the motion should be to provide staff direction to, um, bring a utility tax ordinance uh, in a specified amount, percentage, to council for consideration.
If it's brought in a certain percentage, would that preclude any amendments when the ordinance is considered from changing that number?
It would not, um, the, I guess there's two ways you could do it. One, you, we could bring an ordinance with a blank and then the council could work its well on a, a motion to adopt with a specific percentage and have amendments as, as appropriate or as, 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 uh, council deems it wants to pursue.
So we could just provide direction, bring us an ordinance at a upcoming meeting to implement a utility tax in an unspecified amount and then when that is brought to us, then make motions to fill in that blank?
Yeah, I mean, at, at this point, uh, staff has brought you all the details on the, uh, in, in the impact of, you know, uh, several, of a utility tax at several different levels, so, um, I think the groundwork is done. Uh, if, if I may be stepping into the finance director's bailiwick here, but from a parliamentary procedure and a governance procedure, we can, you can direct us, you could direct staff to bring you an ordinance with a specific, specified percentage or you can direct it to bring an ordn- an enabling ordinance and then, uh, council will consider what percentage it should be when it's on the agenda.
Is, is that your motion, Mayor Protam, the latter?
Well, I was the second, so, um, wasn't it, or, no, I made that, sorry. Yeah, um, I, cause I would like us to still discuss the different options and decide.
Okay, so it'd be the la- latter of what the city attorney just said, a motion to direct his staff to bring us an ordinance implementing a utility tax in an unspecified amount.
Yes, so move to, um, move to have staff come back with this ordinance, um, to implement a utility tax in an unspecified amount.
Going once? Twice? Well, the motion dies for lack of a second.
My light's on.
I'm sorry? Councilmembers Teckler?
Yeah, I'd, um, based on what we've seen here today, that even with the five percent property tax increase, we're, we've been shown a number of, um, six percent that still gives us a gap. We're gonna have to, oh, find a way to overcome next year. And since that's the max, I would make a motion to instruct the staff to come back to us with a utility tax.
No, the motion failed, it didn't get a second.
Didn't get a second. Yeah, cause I wanted to.
Cause I was on.
I waited till he killed it. He killed it and then I put my light on.
I didn't kill it.
Well, you said, it's dead.
Don't blame me.
So where was I? Uh, make a motion, uh, for the staff to come back to council with a utility tax of six percent for discussion and final approval. Cause without it, we're dead.
Going once? Twice? Okay, that motion fails for lack of a second. I guess we'll give it one more time. I guess I'm thoroughly confused cause I heard just people talking about options B and B one and now they're not following through on options B and B one. Well, the, the. Uh, if the, but if there's a motion for an unspecified amount, we can continue having that discussion. Without a motion, then the, the, there's no further discussion. So we need something to start that.
It already, motion already failed, Mayor.
I understand. But I, but I'm hearing mixed things. I'm hearing people say they wanna consider options, but anyway. Councilmember Paddock?
Can we bring that motion back up to reconsider options or to consider options? Or once it's failed, it's?
No.
There, there's no, excuse me, Councilmember Paddock, but there was no consideration of the option. It was, it wasn't seconded. So there hasn't been a, there hasn't been an action taken on it.
Yeah, there hasn't been anything that's died, the, the motion never, if it got a second and then wasn't passed, then there'd be.
Motion to reconsider Mayor Protam's motion.
Second.
Okay, so that's a motion to reconsider is to bring back the un- utility tax for discussion in an unspecified amount.
Oh yeah, it's a new motion.
Yeah, no, that's, thank you, thank you Director Todd.
It's.
There was nothing to reconsider because there was no motion seconded and approved, so it would be a new motion.
Consider the reconsider of the new motion for, I'll make a new motion.
So the new motion is?
For, uh, to discuss a utility tax of an unspecified amount.
Do I need to second again? Second?
Is, is your mic on?
Yeah.
Okay, second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Um, I would, um, the reason why I wanted to do this as an undisclosed, uh, an amount to be determined is because, um, the scenarios we had were all three and six percent. And I felt in some ways the three percent didn't necessarily, like, show us, or didn't quite get there sometimes, but the six percent was way too much. So I'm still interested in seeing something like a medium ground on like, what a four percent would look like. So that's why I didn't, I, I was hoping that we could still look at some scenarios in a discussion and, and weigh in what the others would look like rather than just three and six.
Well, now's the time to specify for council what options that we haven't seen, that you'd like considered or brought, then what information would you like to see?
Yeah, I would like to see a four percent as well.
Any other numbers? We've seen three sticks, we've now got four. Councilmember Paddock?
Are the, are the, the numbers that are listed here?
It, it could be anything in between.
Okay. Just asking a question about the chart.
Okay.
Discussion?
Yeah. Uh. Or Steckler?
Question item, uh, I, I don't understand why we wanna keep kicking the can down the road when we know that six percent is the average, six percent on the charts that they presented us with still have a deficit and we can't go any higher than that. So why wouldn't we want to just, maybe I'm misunderstanding something here. Why would we not want to go ahead with six percent? And we're still gonna have to find a way to fix the gap of what we're, you know, that we're gonna have in twenty twenty six. Why would we entertain anything less? I guess I don't know where that money would come from.
Councilmember Duque?
My hesitation was only because it seemed like we don't have a vote. It didn't, it didn't seem like people were interested in the utility tax, but maybe I'm reading the room wrong. Um, so I was, I was reading it differently than how the mayor shared, um, but I really appreciate it coming back. So I, um, and having this, what I'd like to see is, um, what, it, to see it without, you know, we have the scenario that we've, the property tax that we, what does it look like? Basically, this chart that you have without a utility tax, which you may have shared like in the past, like in like round one or something like that. Am I making sense, Amina?
In other words, the graph that just has the property tax increase that we just approved, the TBD that we just, uh, and provided direction on, so we see what that looks like with just those two things without a utility tax.
Like I'm looking at scenario.
And then councilmember Steckler is asking for and six percent added on to that or incorporated into that graph. And Mayor Protam asked for five percent to be incorporated into that, four percent, I'm sorry.
So not, not the one you're looking at, or not the one on our screen, but the one with like the yell, like the chart.
Right.
Yeah, so you want me to, um, um, create a scenario with the five percent property tax with the add-ons, no utility tax and just TBD.
Yep, correct, and then one with the four percent.
Okay.
Four percent, five percent, six percent.
Yeah, we already have the six.
Yeah, we already have six, so we need four and five added.
Yeah. And, and a zero. What does it mean? What does this look like, um, for zero? Yeah, without it. I think that's helpful for our discussion next week.
Councilmember Cavallari?
I agree with Councilmember Duque. I don't do that very often, but I agree zero percent. I agree with that part.
Okay.
However, wait, I'm not through.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I was hoping.
Um.
Do I need to extend the meeting?
No, I'll be pretty quick. Um, we've already raised the property tax five percent. We've already approved the transportation benefit district. And again, still not one offer at reduction in spending. I mean, nothing. I won't support any ounce of utility tax. I just think it's, it's bad business and it, and it looks bad on all of us that no one's willing to come to the table, even quarter, half a mil, something.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Motion passes six to one. Okay, can we have a motion to extend the regular meeting to nine forty-five, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that brings us, where are we? Backed down to item, new business item H, ordinance related to planned residential development code change. No, we got rid of the study session on economic development. This should, this should be relatively quick and painless.
Yeah, don't say that. Yes.
Biggest last words there. Well, good evening, good evening, everyone. Um, super excited to bring this forward. I won't, um, I won't talk for too long mercifully. Um, got Justin here. We're gonna bring this up. We already went through a study session on this. Planning commission has reviewed this and, um, we are excited to move this forward. Thank you.
That's my kind of staff report.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, Council. So first, we have a quick pressure of what planned area development is. So it's an alternative form of development that allows, um, a flexible, um, development of land. And that means that, uh, you can modify certain zoning requirements if, in pursuit of achieving, um, better outcomes. So for instance, if you had a stand of trees on, on a, on a plot of land and you couldn't fill around them because the setbacks, um, were too high, you could reduce the setbacks in favor of, you know, preserving this native vegetation. So as Mill Creek has matured, we've gone from our expansion to infill development. And to accommodate infill development, we need to update our planned area development regulations, um, to reduce minimum size requirements and we also wanna remove ambiguity, um, about how they should be used. So proposed amendments are primarily reducing the minimum size for planned residential development from two point five to one point five acres. And then in the section on which modifications can be made to the zoning code, um, wanna clarify that the burden of proof is on the applicant, um, clarify which uses can be modified and out, uh, remove some outdated references to the, um, uh, streetscape building of the comprehensive plan. Any questions? All right.
Questions? Motions? Right there on the screen.
Quick question, that's right.
Yeah, go ahead.
What would the impact be of the two point five to one point five, just to share with that? What, what does that look like for?
Yeah, so currently planned, um, commercial developments have no limited size. So any size of commercial development can have a planned area development. Residential has a two point five acre minimum, um, so dropping that threshold just allows more parcels to be developed using planned area developments. And that's important because we have three parcels, uh, we're working in the city that are not developing and this will really help them to develop with, like with the last meeting. So it, it would increase number of parcels that we, that could use this procedure, um, modestly, but not excessively.
Those, those three, basically. Yeah, thank you for that.
The, does it affect the aesthetics or are we changing any of the, any of the codes in the city? Height restrictions, density?
Um, well, so the planning development allows you to change a lot of those things, but only if you can prove that, um, it's fulfilling a goal such as, um, reducing impervious surfaces or, um, preserving natural vegetation. So the idea is that, that the whole planning development procedure allows you to modify those things, but you have to prove that it's providing a better outcome than what originally would have happened.
So, so the only reason we're having this discussion is cause there's three developments that wanna develop and they can't, right?
Exactly.
Can you tell us about those?
Sure, so one is, um, on Bothell River Highway near one thirty-second, um, and near the Lowe's. That parcel is zone community business, um, but it's, it's very difficult to develop as a community business or as a, as a commercial site because it has, it's hard to get access in and out because it's near the intersection and there's not like much visibility to the inner part of the site. So this would allow us to increase the amount of residential on the site while still requiring commercial advantage. So right now, you could only have fifty percent of the square footage on that site be residential. This will allow us to up that to maybe seventy-five percent so they can get townhomes or something like that while still getting that commercial on the, along the highway.
Another benefit of the, uh, PRD process is that it also, it does allow that flexibility, but it still preserves our right to negotiate and still preserves our ability to set standards, um, on that granting. And part of the, uh, code language in there also provides more specific language regarding the tests that are required to be able to allow this to happen, so we can try to really preserve the original tenant character of its surrounding neighborhood.
Other questions? Hearing none is?
I'll, I'll move to adopt an ordinance amending Mill Creek Municipal Code sixteen dot one two regarding planned area development.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have no proposed new initiatives. We have, um, we're gonna postpone the study session to another night. No consent agenda. That brings us to our reports. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, two reports and then we have a few other staff reports. The first is the, uh, Center for Quality Community, CQC Scholarship, um, put on by AWC. Uh, there, um, the scholarship now is open for nomination and our, uh, marketing manager is working on, uh, working on that process for, uh, um, this year and I, I believe it's March of next year is when the applicants around that time get chosen and they will bring that individual back in for, um, a, a presentation and so forth. So, uh, we started that process. Uh, the next report, I thought I'd just kind of follow up on a comment I made last week about the association. last week about the association of, I think the Association of Public Works employees. There was a conference back in Yakima that uh our maintenance operations manager and his team uh attended and I wanted to just make note of a a competition that they hold at that conference every year. Um where many cities actually bring their equipment to compete with other cities and 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 it just congratulations for um Jason, um what Jason is? Jason Thomas, who actually took eleventh overall across all cities going in cold, so um gives you a testament to the to the expertise that we have on that team. Um and then Bram, I don't know Bram, I can't remember Bram's peak. Um Bram actually took fourth in um I think the skid skid steer, I believe, so um just to give you a sense of kind of the skills that that our team has. Um and uh we're pretty proud uh those two, so um I'll hand it over to uh Jody for a monument sign update.
Hey, just out of curiosity.
Yes.
Martin, do we do we do anything for those guys that achieve milestones like that? Do we give them a Starbucks gift card for fifty bucks or something?
Not at the, no, no, we don't. Um. Yeah.
All right, just curious.
Yeah, we, yeah, no, we don't. Thanks.
Thank you, Martin. Good evening, Council. I wanted to give you a quick update on our monument sign project that was kind of put on hold last year while we went through the whole website update. And um on September seventeenth, we uh published the request for proposals and the deadline was set for October ninth, so we um did send out that RFP to forty-one vendors, I believe. And then um had several comments and questions, but two submitted a proposal. And um one of them was fantastic. So we, I went with a company called Signs Plus out of Bellingham. They have tremendous experience, all in-house. Um they're gonna do all the work for what we think is a good price. We're meeting with them to finalize the scope details uh and doing a walkthrough of all the signage projects tomorrow. And um the Jim back at the our project manager is just super excited about how he can bring his expertise to um make all the Mill Creek signs beautiful, so excited about it. And then, of course, once we finalize the scope and the contract, then we'll bring that back to council for your approval soon. Any questions?
No, great, thank you.
No other reports, Mayor.
Okay, I got a few just quick things. Uh first, thanks to Mayor Protem for covering for me last week. I think I was eating the yellowfin tuna that I caught deep sea fishing at for dinner while you guys were having your meeting, but um I will be virtual next week. I have to be in Vancouver, Washington for work Monday through Wednesday, so I'll be virtual. And tomorrow I host my last South County Mayor's meeting. We're hosting it here in in Mill Creek at Tapt uh over in the farm. Um two more things. Uh want to echo some of the comments that were made earlier about uh the respectful discussion we have. You know, with all the things that are going on, the craziness at the national level, it's one of the things I've appreciated about local politics is we have very divergent polit- political beliefs up here on the dais, but we roll up our sleeves and get crap done. And I wish that other politicians at different levels could model what what we do at this level. Um the last thing is on the car update, I wish I had not had that on the agenda for last week because um I when I went through the materials for the meeting, there's some concerns I had that I want to discuss further. Um you know, I think we need to have a little discussion about the flexibility that we have and what our actual obligations are regarding best available signs. This is where my day job intersects quite heavily with my uh jo- job here. But I was particularly concerned that I didn't hear much discussion about what impact there would be of any of these changes, if any, impact on the sub area. Um you know, if we're increasing buffers and increasing site potential tree heights, I want to make sure that we are considering that because if there would be impacts, there is flexibility under the law if we have a reasoned justification to not follow best available signs. So I want to make sure we have those discussions before we take final action, so I'm gonna be sitting down with uh Justin and and Jeff on Friday to share my concerns and comments so they can consider those when they take it to the planning commission next week and we can talk further about this when we come back in December, so. Um that's all I had. Mayor Protem?
No report, Mayor.
Councilmember Cavalry?
No report.
Councilmember Steckler?
Very quick report, just a shout out. On October twenty-fifth, last Saturday, uh City of Mill Creek and Kiwanis Club and the Mill Creek Chamber of Commerce had their annual shredding event and it was absolutely incredible. Uh it was supposed to run from eleven to two. People started showing up at nine thirty in the morning. Luckily, everyone was set up. The bottom line was uh we actually shredded four point three tons of uh sensitive data for the citizens. Um no cost if they want to make a donation and they were very generous for their donations. Uh the Kiwanis Club uh received two thousand six hundred sixty-three dollars in donations to help fund their scholarships and other service funds, so it was our eighth year and our best year ever. And as I mentioned um like last week, special shout out, she wasn't here, but our per citizen Barb Idol was the first one on site that day of the event, helping to direct traffic as she always does. And single-handedly kept everything off the streets, so even though we were servicing a significant number of cars and people, we never backed up. We kept it going the whole time. It was it was a quite a little production. They to get four point three tons in a few hours is pretty pretty darn impressive. That's it.
Councilmember Ellison?
No report.
Councilmember Duque?
I don't know how um well, uh I don't know how trick-or-treat went, um because I have a family tradition of um of uh trick-or-treating in my neighborhood, but I've heard wonderful things about the event. Um so I just want to say thank you for that. And as we um come up to our veterans parade, that'll be Tuesday. And I hope to see everyone at our um our ceremony in the morning, but it's it's these events that I think are just key. You know, they're small or not small, they're they take up a lot of time, but they're very impactful to making sure Mill Creek um is a a a a community that honors and and um engages with each other. So a big thank you to those events. And I just wanted to say that I felt like even though with all the fear of rain, um there was quite a bit of trick-or-treaters in my neighborhood and a big thank you to Jackson High School who um once again hosted from a different time, not competing, from four to six um in their cafeteria and gym, their trick-or-treating and that is um a big a wonderful event specifically to see all the high school students make time out of their day to have little booths for all the kids to be able to come in because I was putting all my eggs in a basket there because I really thought it was gonna pour rain the whole time. And so we made that our big our big party, but it worked out, so um a big thank you to everyone who um participated in whatever activities they did for our community over the weekend.
Councilmember Paddock?
Uh just a quick one. Um I'll I'll miss the uh not small but intimate uh Veterans Day memorial service uh on Tuesday morning. I'll be spending time with my favorite veteran, my father uh and uh and my mom uh in Florida that morning, so uh uh we'll be doing it that way, but we'll miss it. It's it's always a highlight of the year.
Hi, names communication. Hearing like to address the council. I'm seeing no positive reaction in the chambers. And I don't see any members of the public online. Do we need the executive session? Do we need it tonight?
No.
Okay, so we will strike the executive session from the agenda. With nothing further on the agenda, we'll adjourn the meeting at nine thirty-nine.